This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
My name is Christine Graham-Allan and is Chair of the Amherst Planning Board. I am calling this meeting to order at 6:32 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available livestream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken as normal. I will now take a roll call. Board members, as you hear your name called, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and then please place yourself back on mute. Michael Burtwhistle.
I'm here.
Maria Chow.
Here.
Jack Jemsek.
Here.
Doug Marshall.
Here.
Janet McGowan.
Here.
Thank you. Board members, if technical difficulties arise, we may need to pause temporarily to rectify the problem and then continue the meeting. If you do have technical issues, please let Sean or Pam know. Discussion may be suspended while the technical issues are addressed, and the minutes will note if a disconnection has occurred. Please use the raise hand function to answer a question or to make a comment. I will see your raised hand and call upon you to speak. After speaking, please try to remember to re-mute yourself. Opportunity for public comment will be provided during the general public comment period and at other times throughout the meeting. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during the general public comment period. If you do wish to make a comment during any of the public comment periods, you must join the meeting via the Zoom teleconferencing link. This link is shown on the slide and can be entered into a search engine. The link can also be found on the on the meeting agenda, which is located on the town website in two ways. One is through the calendar listing for this meeting on the homepage, and you can find a link within the event details. A second way is to go to the Planning Board webpage and click on the most recent agenda link. On the agenda, there is a link towards the top of the page where it states virtual meeting. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when the public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your telephone. When called upon, please identify yourself stating your full name and address and put yourself back in mute when finished speaking. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes and at the discretion of the Planning Board chair. If these guidelines are not complied with or the speaker exceeds, there are a lot of time, their participation will be disconnected from the meeting. Included on tonight's agenda, item three, public hearing, site plan review. The board will continue the public hearing for Amherst Media's SPR application to construct a new home office building, which is being continued from July 15. Additionally, the board will open a public hearing for SPP 2021-01 submitted by Amherst Media to request a front setback modification requirement. The SPP and SPR, public hearings will be combined as a joint public hearing for the purpose of discussion. Moving on, the slide will now show the meeting agenda. Again, note the virtual Zoom meeting link. We will now move on to item one, which is minutes, and we actually have two sets of minutes to review. So I have we have June 3, minutes from that, and June 17. We'll start with June 3, and I'm watching for any hands. Are there any comments or additions that anyone would like to make? Chris, I see your hand first. Chris?
So Janet McGowan sent me some comments about the June 3 meeting. I can read them to you now if you're ready for that. So on page 11, paragraph four, in the second sentence, Ms. McGowan would like it to read, "Ms. McGowan expressed concern that the proposed process does not provide notification to abutters, neighbors, or nearby businesses." And that seems fine to me. So that's item one. Item two is on page 12, at the very top of the page, the first paragraph. Ms. McGowan added, "She asked about voting requirements on the planners' listserv. Other towns with a super majority voting requirement reported that it was not usually a problem, but at times it can be a problem to have a quorum. So meetings were rescheduled for a vote." And that seems fine to me, too, in terms of content.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Are there, I'm watching for hands. Are there any other members who have comments to the June 3 minutes? And if I am not seeing any hands, I could also take a motion. Michael.
There we go. I move to approve the motion of the minutes as suggested amendments by Mr. Best.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion on these June 3 minutes? I'm not seeing any hands. I still, Michael, yours is still up, but so at this point, we can take a vote. I'll do a quick roll call. Of course, I've lost that sheet already. All right, so for the June 3 minutes, to accept them with the changes, Michael Burtwhistle.
Yes.
Maria.
Yep.
Jack.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Janet.
Yes.
And myself, Christine, yes. So that's 6-0-0. So if we move to the next one, June 17. Again, I'm watching hands. Does anyone have any comments or additions they would like to make on the June 17? Doug?
Yeah, one brief, brief minor edit on page 11. The first paragraph under board comments and discussion. Second line. The lines, I would like it to read banned on the facade that separates the stone and the siding so that it aligns with the second, the first floor level.
Yep. And where is that? You said page 11?
Page 13, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Good. Thank you.
Can you read that again, please?
So that it aligns with the first floor level.
Thank you.
Is that all, Doug? I'm not seeing any other hands. I could also take a motion. Anyone? Michael?
I'm sorry. Move to approve the motion of the minutes as amended.
Second?
I will second.
Okay, great. Any other comments, concerns? I'm watching for hands. I'm going to lower Michael's ears. So I see no hands. So at this point, we'll take a quick roll call. So to approve the June 17 minutes as amended, Michael?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Doug?
Hi.
Janet?
Yes.
And myself. So that's 6-0-0 approved. Great. And thank you both, Chris and Pam, for joining us. They're both very long and detailed. Thank you. Okay, so we will move to item three. Item three, public comment period. So this is, Hannah, you can start looking. This is a time where attendees can address the board for something that's not on our agenda for tonight, something different. They want to bring to us attention and just remember that we don't give a response back, but we will listen. Pam, do we see anybody in there with raised hand? I'm not seeing any.
I don't see any raised hands, and we have nobody who has called in at this point.
Okay, great. So at this point, I see no public comment. We'll move on. What time is it? Yep, 6:41. So we can definitely start our public hearing.
I'm going to move Mr. Sparkle in.
Okay, great. Let me see. All right, I'll start. Okay, so it is 6:41. In accordance with the provisions of MGL, Chapter 40, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding SPR 2020-11 Amherst Community Television DBA Amherst Media, corner of Gray Street and Main Street, continued from July 1 and July 15, 2020. Request site plan review approval to construct a new building and associated site improvements for Amherst Media, a 501(c)(3) educational institution under Section 3.330.0 of the zoning bylaw BN Zoning District Map 14B, Parcels 250 and 251. Same time, I'm also going to open a special permit, SPP. So now it is, both of these were combined and advertised at the same time. So now it's 6:42. In accordance with provisions of MGL, Chapter 48, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted. This hearing is being held for the purpose of providing an opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding SPP 2021-01 Amherst Community Television DBA Amherst Media, corner of Gray Street and Main Street. Request a special permit under footnote A of Table 3, Article 6 of the zoning bylaw to modify the front setback requirement, if required, for a new building for Amherst Media BN Zoning District Map 14B, Parcels 250 and 251. So with them both combined, first thing I'm going, I'm watching for hands. Are there any board member disclosures? I'm not seeing any, but I'll continue to watch. Welcome, welcome, Mr. Sparkle. I see you there.
Good evening.
You have different things hanging behind you now.
I try to keep it interesting.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for that. Is there anyone else that you need here or you expect that will also be presenting or talking?
I did send a list to Pam. I'm expecting that Jim Lesko, the Executive Director of Amherst Media, would be available. There may be other members of the board with him. I also know that due to the power outage, a couple people who would normally be here are not able to be here tonight, but I don't think we're worried about it at this time.
Okay. Bucky, do you want me to move Jim Lesko in as a panelist now? Do you want me to wait until you tell me to? How do you want that to work?
If you're able, please bring him in at this point, and I'm sure Jim will use restraint and speak up if he feels it's pertinent. You know, he is my boss after all on this.
Okay, I'll move him. Let's move him in. And I can tell, I can tell you who else is over here. Ed Severance.
Oh, Ed made it. Great, sure.
Would you like him to come on in, too?
Yes, please.
And I believe that is it unless somebody is logged in with a different name. And if they are, they can raise their hand and let me know. I'll be watching.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so do you want to share your screen or, okay?
Let me get this rolling.
And give us a heads up if there's anything we need to pull out of our packet to look at.
I don't think so. The presentation is not extremely long. In fact, I'll probably spend more time reading things on my screen than extemporaneously going off on tangents here. So let me, let me just get into it here. Again, I'm Bucky, representing Amherst Media, and Gillen Collaborative Architects is also around sometimes, maybe not tonight, to support this process and was the designer for the building. First, since this is a joint meeting, I want to focus on the site plan review. This is my only slide for the site plan. From the continuation from two weeks ago, there were a few requests that the board made. There was lots of discussion, but just a few requests. One, they wanted to see the parking management plan as a separate document that was separated and submitted with a very minor edit, basically that there was also the request for two spaces to be labeled as guest parking, and those spaces are number seven and eight, and those are the two that are on the east side against Gray Street. So we'll have guest parking signs for those two spaces. And there was a question about whether or not the roof was solar ready. And yes, indeed, it is designed to be solar ready. And as far as I know, that was everything that came out of that meeting that required a response from me. Today, I did get a copy of a letter from Attorney Matt Massingill, which I just want to bring up. He mentioned propane trucks and fueling in that letter that he wrote, and maybe you've had a chance to read it or not. But I just want to point out that there are no propane tanks on the site and that his hypothetical concern regarding what would happen if a truck showed up to fuel is not a concern because there's nothing to fill.
There is no propane tank?
No.
Okay.
Yes. And really, that wraps up the site plan review portion of my presentation tonight because really what's new on the table is the special permit that has been in much discussion. So moving into that. Yes, Amherst Media is absolutely a 501(c)(3) educational nonprofit use functionality institution, whatever you want to call it. And by law 6.60 does say that educational or religious uses shall have the minimum front, side, rear setbacks of twice the distance shown in Table 3, which is the dimensional regulations in Article 6. Normally, the front setback would be 10 feet, and if by law 6.60 were enforced to this application, then that would be 20 feet, which, as previously discussed, would be problematic for the current layout and go contrary to what the local historic district commission was hoping to achieve. However, of course, I think we all know that footnote A of Table 3 says that the setbacks can be modified under special permit by the Special Permit Granting Authority, which in this case is the Planning Board. So that's what we're doing here today, hopefully. So we are requesting reduction in that setback requirement such that the building may sit where proposed. And to look at that, the familiar side of the site plan, zoom in a little bit just to the front of the building because it's really what is sort of the hot topic here. So presently, the building sits at closest 13.3 feet from the front setback to Main Street. Some of it sits back almost 26 feet, actually the majority of the building, and this is over 31 feet from the front lot line over on the east side. So just to give people a sense of what we're talking about for this site specifically. But you know, when we're looking at these things, it's in relationship to the neighborhood, as I'll bring up a few times here. So in one case, we have location. Okay, so the, the local historic district commission also did write a letter of support, which I've brought up a few times over the last few meetings, and one of the sentences in that, I say report, it was really a letter. I think I said report, but it was a letter, and it said that the location on the site, amassing the proposed building, were very important considerations for the commission because these attributes make the structure consistent with the character of the historic district. So we have already located things according to the Historic District Commission in an optimal manner regarding placement on the property. And looking relative to the neighborhood and a larger scale, not just our site, what I've done is I prepared a little sketch based off of the Town of Amherst GIS system, which shows buildings across the street on Main Street in the historic district, well, most of them are, and the front setbacks are nine feet, nine feet. That's also nine feet, but it's really the same building. This one's 15 feet. That's the biggest of them, and this one is negative two feet, which means it's actually encroaching into the public right of way. And on average, these buildings are 7.75 feet from the front property line, and Amherst Media is proposing 13.3 feet. So almost twice what the average is in the area and almost as large as the largest setback in the one block area of commercial district. So we are a little more generous in our setback as proposed than is, you know, sort of experienced in the neighborhood currently. So that's how we sit relative to the neighborhood. But then also in comparing the use, the educational use of Amherst Media, like, yes, it is an educational facility, but it's much more like a tutoring facility. For example, there is not a classroom in this building. And most educational facilities would definitely have classrooms. So it's not a typical educational use. You know, if you're talking about UMass or a high school or Amherst College, you know, these buildings are often imposing fairly, fairly large structures. Simultaneously, sometimes they can have hundreds of visitors in large classrooms or scores of visitors in multiple classrooms. And normally, the properties of these institutions have ample room. They have a little more wiggle room than Amherst Media has. And looking at the proposal that I'm presenting tonight, you know, it's a fairly unassertive building. It has been designed in residential scale with the buildings on Gray Street and have a diminutive commercial feel, smaller than some of the buildings across the street that are commercial buildings, only getting a handful of visitors at a time, quite literally, like no more than five usually people in this building at a time. And it's a very modest lot area. It's only just over a half acre. So we don't quite fit the typical educational facility, which, you know, makes sense. If you have a giant building with, you know, 15,000 foot footprint and, you know, several stories tall, you know, doubling the setback makes an awful lot of sense in that case. It does not make sense in the case of Amherst Media. And that ties into what some of the town's experts have said. The building commissioner wrote in a determination last month, quote, "In my opinion, Section 6.6 of the zoning bylaw does not apply, and the additional setback is not required." And the town attorney backed that up just a few days ago, saying, "I interpret the building commissioner's determination to be finding that it would not be a reasonable regulation to apply Section 6.60 to this project, given the site, the proposed use, and the foreseeable impacts and so on. In my opinion, this determination is within the building commissioner's discretion." So in some ways, if we just listen to what the experts said, the special permit isn't even necessary. That we're sort of doing a belt and suspenders approach with the additional special permit process because we just want to make sure that we cover all the possible bases that we can for this overall project to move forward as proposed and designed in conjunction with the local historic district commission. Looking at the bylaw a little bit, under bylaw 1038, specific findings required for special permits. There are 19 items. This proposal does comply with all of them, and I do want to point out a couple. And the first one is 10.391, which indicates that the proposal should protect the historic features in the area. And the entire site design, the shape, size, mass of the building have all been very finely tuned through the seven-meeting process with the Historic District Commission. It, that the whole design is predicated upon protecting the historic features of this neighborhood. Obviously, we were not blocking the important views on the west side of the lot. The building has been brought down, and the architecture is in line with what would be expected for the Emily Dickinson Historic District. Going a little further into both sort of the finding section and Table 3, bringing these ideas together. And with the findings, 10.395 says that the proposal should not create disharmony with respect to the train and the use scale and architecture of existing buildings in the vicinity which have functional or visual relationship thereto. And I bring this one up because footnote A brings this one up, and it says, "In applying the criteria established in Section 10.395, the Special Permit Granting Authority shall consider the proposed modified dimensional requirements in the context and patterns of that same," and I've got my screen blocked off with all your faces here. I got to move that. "in the context and pattern to the same dimensions established by existing buildings in the surrounding neighborhood." So I've already shown that we are more generous in the setback, and doubling the setback is, would be significantly out of step with the existing surrounds. Which really then sort of brings me to the end of this brief portion here, you know, just I surely do not need to remind the board, and purpose of special permits is, you know, to ensure a harmonious relationship between proposed development and the surroundings, and that, of course, is consistent with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, which certainly we don't have to get into. So I do want to say that the proposal, the building, the location, the scale, the massing is harmoniously integrated with the surroundings. It's already been assured by the local historic district commission's review, as well as protecting the historic interests of the district, and that the educational use of Amherst Media is nothing like the use and functionality of the middle school or UMass or Amherst College buildings. So this is the reason that we are requesting a special permit per footnote A of Table 3 for this project as we have offered it. And that concludes my presentation to the board, and I'm happy to open the discussion now. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anyone else from Amherst Media who wants to speak at this time? I don't see any hands. All right, thank you. Thank you for that information at this time. And if you don't mind just leaving your screen up in case one of the board members has a question on one of the slides. So I'll open it up to the board members right now. Does anyone have questions on this new information? Can also be questions to Chris Bestrop regarding the special permit and any administrative or internal questions. I see Jack Jemsek's hand.
I was just wondering about the argument with the propane tank submitted by the abutters, one of the abutters representative there. Was there some confusion? I'm just trying to recall, was there some confusion in terms of initial submittal referencing propane deliveries? Or where did that come from, I guess, is my question.
I am not sure where that came from. Our plan has never shown a propane tank. In fact, the plan has always shown the mystical gas connection. So we've always indicated that if it's available, we might make a gas connection. And the architects have been working with mechanicals that could potentially work off of a gas system if it were available. But nobody on our end of the table is really interested in a propane tank. I think it has been discussed at the meeting somehow extemporaneously, and I can't put my finger in my memory as to how that came up. But it's, we're not interested. We don't have room for, we don't have it on the plans, never have.
So how is the building being heated?
Electricity.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other board questions at this time? Not seeing any hands. If not, we could move on to move on to the public comment. So at this time, I'll ask attendees, I don't think we have too many, but if I could see a show of hands in our attendees, who would like to speak tonight? And I'm just watching, just to see. I'm seeing one hand. Okay, so I see one hand. Pam, I'm sure you see that. So I'm gonna, do we have any calls? Just, just.
I'm not seeing any calls. So I just see the one, the one hand. Attorney Finnegan.
Okay, well, I'll recognize Mr. Finnegan. I think he's still muted.
Can you hear me now?
We can. Welcome. If you could introduce yourself.
Sure. Thank you very much, Daniel Finnegan. I'm an attorney, and I represent the Abutter Harms by LLC. Just, just very, very briefly, I just want to make a couple of comments. One, I just want to point out that the, that the setback requirement can't be complied with. It's just further evidence that the project, as we've stated before, just appears to us to be too large for the lot on which it's proposed to be situated. So I'd just like to make that comment again for the record. Then also for the record, I'd just like to note that we disagree that the appropriate Then also for the record, I'd just like to note that we disagree that the appropriate mechanism to vary that setback requirement is a special permit in front of the planning board. And again, I just make that comment for the record. That's all.
Thank you. Are there any other hands? I'm not seeing any other hands. So I'm gonna close the public comment. Pam, still no phone calls or anything? So this. Okay, so this would be closing public comment for both the site plan review and the special permit. I'm going back to panelists. I'm gonna ask, are there any other questions? Okay, I see a couple of hands popping up. Michael, and then I see Jack.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. Finnegan to explain why he finds the setback fewer inappropriate.
Is he still? Okay.
I just unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, the question was why I find it inappropriate?
Yes.
The setback? Well, as, as I say, the fact that the building is this close and the issues we've stated with the parking lot, the whole project just appears to us to be too large for the, for the space in which it's proposed to be located. We, we feel that the setback requirement is there in the bylaw for a good reason. They can't be in educational use when it benefits them under the bylaw, but not in educational use when it doesn't benefit them. They're in educational use. They should be required to comply with the setback in the bylaw, which in this case is 20 feet.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute you. Thank you. I'm going back. Michael, is that all? Or should I, can I move to Jack? Whoa, you're muted, Michael. Oops. Let me unmute you. Try again.
It's fine. I'm, I'm, my question is answered. Thank you.
Great. All right, Jack.
Yes. Whoops. I'm just, I'm just thinking that there's, there's in terms of the quote unquote record, I was wondering if maybe Chris Bestrop could summarize all the supportive information from the town council, from Rob Mora. And then there's the, the, you know, attorney letter from, is it Miles Lipton or something like, but there's, there's, there's a kind of a significant argument how this is all okay. And I just, if, I know Bucky spec, or maybe Bucky could just, you know, retort that, that, yeah, sorry. Like I, I don't, we don't need Chris to.
Crisco as well. She's, you know, obviously she's always in, acting in the interest of the town. And I'm just the hired gun, but I'm, I'm happy to summarize. So we do have a letter, an email from Rob Mora that says, because the, the real, the functionality of the educational use is, is not so typical, that section 6.60 would not apply. And then the town's attorney, Joel Bard, indicated that the building commissioner's opinion is defensible and it's his, I guess, right to, to make that kind of determination in this case. And you mentioned a letter from attorney Michael Pill, who has represented pro bono Amherst Media. And that, that letter, well, is it, it is not in my mind quite. It's clearly, that was in response to how did that come out? So there, there was another letter. Oh, there was a letter written to the, I believe it was the planning board. It was, there was already an appeal filed for, I think, this very meeting before the meeting even happened. And Michael Pill, and this is where really, really, we shouldn't be having a lawyer describe this, but my understanding of that letter was that was, were out of order. And that the indication that an, an appeal being filed prior to a meeting ever happening wasn't an appropriate situation. So I think that's where Michael Pill, and he's from Green, Miles and Lipton, that other attorney organization. And I, I very much encourage and would appreciate if Chris Bestrop also either verified what I'm saying or added something if I didn't quite hit the nail on the head.
Yes, I, I would. Chris, could you give us a little bit of what, you know, in-house town hall and with the, our legal counsel?
So am I muted or unmuted? So.
Here you.
Yep. The butters have filed an appeal with the zoning board of appeals. And they are appealing the advisory opinion of the building commissioner. And the advisory opinion of the building commissioner was that the front setback issue can be dealt with, with regard to a special permit for modification of the front setback. The building commissioner also had the opinion that section 6.6 didn't apply in this case. So the, I think I had sent you a copy of the appeal that the butters filed. If not, I apologize for that. But the, the thrust of Mr. Pill's letter is really against the appeal that is coming before the zoning board of appeals and isn't necessarily, you know, speaking about the, the things that you are considering other than to support the idea that a special permit, if, if section 6.6 applies, that a special permit could be, could be filed. I think he said that, but I'm not sure. Let me see. Actually, he didn't even refer to the special permit that you are considering. He really has his arguments against the applicant or the butters filing of the zoning board of appeals, appeal of the decision of the building commissioner. So it's really outside of your realm of jurisdiction, but I wanted you to see it anyway, just so that you, you know, have all the facts. So the building commissioner essentially said that this building isn't really, in terms of its practical function, it doesn't really operate like a, an educational institution or like UMass buildings or Amherst College buildings. And he gave me the example of some of our group homes here in Amherst. And the group homes come in under the, under the use category of nonprofit educational institutions. And these group homes are usually for older adults who can't function on their own and need a sort of protective environment. And we never require, it never even comes up to require a doubling of the setback for group homes. Because even though they are considered under 501(c)(3), they really operate more like a home. So the effect on the neighborhood, the impact on the neighborhood, the traffic, the number of people coming in and out, the height of the building, et cetera, isn't really similar to other educational institutions. So that's an example of a case where something comes in under the nonprofit educational institution use category, but is not required to comply with section 6.6. The other thing that Joel Bard pointed out is that the Dover amendment, which governs these nonprofit educational and religious institutions, says that municipalities may apply reasonable regulations. And so there's a, you know, differing opinions about what reasonable regulations are. But in this case, the building commissioner has made a discretionary determination that the reasonable regulation in this case does not require that there be a doubling of the front setback, given the impact that this building will have on its surroundings. And so you can find out more about that by reading Joel Bard's email of August 2nd, which I have forwarded to you. But I, I could, I interpret the building commissioner's determination to be a finding that it would not be, quote, "a reasonable regulation to apply section 6.6 to this project, given the site, the proposed use, the foreseeable impacts and so on." But Joel Bard goes on to say that even, even if you find that six, section 6.6 does apply in this case, you can still consider the application for the special permit under footnote A and grant that. And that he would consider that a good, a good thing to do. So one of the things you need to do in this case is you need to make a finding as to whether you think section 6.6 applies or not. And then after that, you need to determine whether you want to grant this special permit. And in the case, if you thought that section 6.6 applied, then granting the special permit would be a confirmation that you agree that section, that the doubling of the, that, that, excuse me, that you will grant a modification of the setback under footnote A. If you think it doesn't apply, then it's not absolutely necessary that you grant the special permit. But we would recommend that you do nonetheless as a kind of belt and suspenders. So in any case, we think that you should, we, our recommendation would be to grant the special permit. And then prior to that, also make a finding about whether you think section 6.6 applies or not. Does that help?
That does help. So should we do that now and discuss as members whether we find if it does apply to 6.6 regarding the special permit? And that we should go forward with this process of a special permit? So I'm gonna call some hands. I see, I'm gonna call on Doug and then Janet, and then I see Michael. So Doug.
Yeah, I just wanted to let Chris tell us whether in reference to Attorney Finnegan's assertion that the planning board is not the right authority to grant a waiver of a setback requirement? Whether there are any other boards that are so empowered? Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent question. Chris, can you pop back on?
So ordinarily, or in many cases, the zoning board of appeals is the special permit granting authority. They're usually listed as the special permit granting authority in the use table. In this case, the building commissioner has made a practice of having dimensional modifications go to whatever board is considering the use. So in this case, the planning board is considering the use of this site under a site plan review. And therefore, the building commissioner has sent the special permit application to the planning board. If this were a use that were under the jurisdiction of the zoning board of appeals, he would have sent the dimensional modification special permit to the zoning board of appeals. So the building commissioner has, who has, he's the zoning enforcement officer in the town of Amherst. And he has discretion to, to make certain decisions. And in this case, he's made the decision to have the special permit for the modification of the dimensional requirement for the front setback go to the planning board, because the planning board is considering the site plan review for the use.
Thank you. I had, I had one other question, which was regarding the findings that we are gonna be discussing, whether it would be a stronger finding to first find that the 6.6 does not apply and then grant the, the special permit versus finding that it does apply and granting the permit.
Good question, Chris. Any insight on that?
Well, I think that the building commissioner and I both feel that section 6.6 does not apply. But we do encourage you to grant the special permit. So that would be the direction that we would encourage you to go in. But you may differ from that. And therefore, you could find that section, section 6.6 does apply, but you would still grant the special permit.
Well, assuming, assuming that this is headed toward at least the zoning board of appeals, if not other venues, would we be making a stronger case for those other venues if we said both that it does not apply and granted the permit? Or would we not be making a stronger of, of the two choices?
I think that would be a strong choice for you to make. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know which choice would be the more convincing in court. But, but I agree with the building commissioner that section 6.6 does not apply in this case. And he has that discretion to make. And so my advice would be to find that section 6.6 does not apply and then still to grant the special permit.
And that would be part of a motion stating that, like, we're in agreement with you and the building commissioner that it does not, but we're still moving forward with granting the special.
Okay, the way the legal ad was written is that you would, you're being asked to grant the special permit for this front setback if required. So you can even put that in your motion that if someone decides in the future that section 6.6 does apply, then you are still granting this special permit. It's confirmation that you think that a 10-foot setback in this case, or actually, it's a 13.3-foot setback, but that the 22, that the 20-foot setback is not really necessary. That the setback that's being proposed is appropriate.
So in the preamble where I read, "if required," is that how it was stated in the ad? Is that what you said?
Yeah, that's right. So you might want to include that in your motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further comments.
Okay, thanks, Doug. I'm gonna move to Janet and then Michael.
Hi, thank you. I found myself in a somewhat uncomfortable position, but I, when I feel confident in, I do think that section 6.60 applies, and I would encourage the board to look at the language. It says that table three's dimensional requirements, quote, "shall apply to all educational and religious uses located in the zoning districts." And so this is an educational use, and that's how they presented it. There's no other, I mean, not that entertainment, Amherst Media is educational and providing our community with, you know, tremendous and important services to our community. Also, the, the 6.6 goes on to say that all structures approved after January 1st, 1994, by a permit granting authority for, quote, "for educational or religious uses." And so I would encourage the planning board not to think about, you know, the various lawsuits and sort of setting up what's the best way. I think we should need to do is look at our zoning bylaw. The language is very simple. It's very clear. This is an educational use. This applies. And so then we move on to footnote A. And I think that footnote A applies. And I think the conditions for a special permit are easily met by this application. The supporting materials we've heard in previous hearings and the presentation by Mr. Sparkle tonight, 13-foot setback is appropriate. And so I think we can very easily write it in the opinion that supports this special permit. Go through every, you know, possible thing, but it is an appropriate use setback. It fits the neighborhood. You know, so much of this project is really trying to preserve the historic character of the district that it's in. And I think they've done an exceptional job with that. It, it fits into the neighborhood. I could, I could go through all the different special, you know, permit conditions. But I do think we should not interpret the bylaw in a way for results. But in fact, the language is very simple. It's very clear. And I, you know, I do find myself disagreeing with the town attorney and the building commissioner, who I have tremendous respect for. And so, but I do think you could read the, you read the bylaw as a layperson and you can see this is a very broad term that would encompass this use. That's it.
Thank you. Michael?
Yes. Is there any reason why we couldn't simply avoid voting to, voting that 6.6 applies and that, but simply grant the special permit? Which it would be a simpler approach to it. We're not at a position necessarily to rule on whether 6.6 applies. It's been decided by the building commissioner that it does. And if we simply grant, grant the special permit, isn't that, isn't that enough?
So I guess that's out to the board. So our two options, as I see it, is if the board feels we could take a motion to just vote on whether, either in agreement or not in agreement, that it is impacted by 6.6. Or, or we can not. or we can not address it all and, and just move forward with the special permit. Doug?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Michael. Or at least to clarify what I thought he said, which was that the building commissioner had decided that 6.6 did apply. I was under the impression he'd decided that it did not apply.
Right. I assume that's what Michael meant.
That is indeed what I meant. My, my idea is simply to avoid that question and to move on to the question of granting the special permit.
Thank you.
Would, Michael, a comment, a motion that says that we are voting to affirm the decision of the building commissioner and the director of planning? And, and that's part of our reasoning for granting the special permit?
I don't think we need to do that. I think we just need to, to vote to approve SP 21, 2021-01. Grant, to grant that special permit. Period.
Okay, so we've got two different ideas on the table. If there's any other members who want to state that they feel one way or the other, if we want to make a statement that we're in agreement with the town staff and then vote on the special permit, or would we just not even address it? So I see Janet's hand.
So I, I think what Michael's saying, and I, I endorse it, is the applicant has applied for a special permit and we can grant it or deny it, you know, on its merits. And if we don't need to say section 6.60 applies, why, you know, can we just, you know, they're asking for a special permit, we grant it. We don't have to make, you know, I, you know, and I, I can't vote to say, yes, it does, it doesn't apply. And I would actually be happy to write a memo on it. I was hoping that Casey Law would write something a bit more detailed. But I think I, you know, they've applied for a permit, special permit for whatever their reasons are. You know, let's vote to grant it or deny it on the, you know, the merits of their application and the bylaw requirements. I would support that idea.
Okay, thank you. Chris Bestrip, I see your hand.
I just wanted to say, I think I agree with Michael that you could avoid the issue entirely, not make a finding on section 6.6, but do add the words when you grant the special permit, if you choose to grant it, that you are allowing this modification of the front setback if required. And that kind of leaves it up to someone else to determine whether it actually applies or not. But you've granted the special permit and that gives confirmation that you agree that 10 feet or 13.3 feet is an appropriate setback for this particular location.
Thank you. Michael, I see your hand.
Yeah, I move we close the public hearing and grant special permit 2021-01 if necessary.
Okay, for, before we move on to a motion, I just want to confirm a few things. We should do final comments and check in with the public for any other additional comments. And would we do, Chris, the special permit and the SPR at the same time? Should we do findings and conditions first, or would we move forward with the special permit first? Chris?
I think you can do them separately. You need to take a separate vote. So I would definitely make separate motions. I have a question about whether you need to go through the findings of 10.38. Traditionally, what you have done when you're granting a special permit under footnote A is that you really look at the requirements of footnote A. And the requirement is that you examine what is going on in the surrounding neighborhood. And if what is being requested is compatible with the similar dimensional requirement in the surrounding neighborhood. In other words, these, these buildings across the street, for the most part, are closer to the front setback than Amherst Media is being proposed to be, then you know, making that finding that complies with the language of footnote A, I think is really all you need to do. But if you want to go through the 10.38 special permit findings, we could do that as well. And I think that was the direction that Ms. McGowan was moving in and maybe that makes sense because maybe it's, you know, again, belt and suspenders, just sort of confirming that this is really what you believe and you are voting, you know, with clear eyes that it, that you feel that it meets all the 10.38 criteria as well as the criteria contained in footnote A. So it's really up to you as far as.
So I think we can handle this separate. If it's okay with the board, we can move forward with just the special permit right now and sort of take care of that. And then we can go back and take care of the the site plan review. So Michael has proposed a motion. Would you be able to repeat that again, Michael? And we'll look for then a second?
Sure. I move we close the public hearing.
For the special permit. Yep.
And grant special permit request of SPP 2021-01. If that special permit turns out to be necessary.
If, if required for a new building. Yep.
Second.
We worked that one. And who seconded that? Maria? Okay, Maria. All right. So that's on the table. At this point, can I just, Pam, are you there? Can we just go to attendees to make sure that there's no additional? At this time, if there's any other final public comments to this. I see one hand, so I'm going to address that. I see town counselor Dorothy Pam has raised her hand. I'm going to click a lot of talk.
Oh, I just did Christine.
Okay, is she good?
Don't mute her.
Yeah, no.
Dorothy, can, can, can you hear us? Can you say hello?
I don't see the mic. Isn't that weird?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
We're with, we're without power for the, we have no internet, so I'm on the phone. Interesting. Okay, I, I just wanted to make a little remark. At this point, I don't have any argument with the whole question of the permit for educational institution. I, I follow the arguments and I have no problem with that. But I was a little bit unhappy with Bucky Sparkle's statement that the buildings, the setback was consistent with those that surrounded it, looking only to the east and across the street and ignoring the Amherst Women's Club and the Boys and Girls Club, which of course have huge setbacks. So I, I know the historical group worked as hard as they could to try to keep the new building as much out of the view range of those buildings. But I, I just think that in terms of the record, it should be acknowledged that it's right next to incredible setbacks as part of the historical district. And, you know, the Amherst Women's Club has, is, is not fighting this. Many times things happen and people don't fight for lots and lots of reasons. But just understand that, that there is a change being made in a very beautiful block. And I know people are trying to do it in ways that are least injurious, but it, it is a serious matter. That's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right. So coming back to the board. So we're open for comments and discussions from us. I see Janet McGowan's hand. I'm not seeing any other hands at this time. So we're discussing the motion that's on the table right now. Janet?
I've never really understood until tonight that expression belts and suspenders. I would think that when we discuss, we look at this, we might want to go beyond the usual practice of just looking at a few dimensional, you know, the special permit requirements about the neighborhood and dimensional requirements and fill in, you know, look at the other special permit requirements, which are very, most of them are very similar to the requirements of site plan review. And I think that would be a very that would be in the testifying or challenges. And so I, I would encourage to do that extra piece of looking at what we've seen in the record and how, in the different criteria, what we've seen that would support those things. I know it sounds a little, but I just, the belts, suspenders, the raincoat. I don't know what else people wear, you know, but I think that maybe that's a prudent course of action. But, you know, I'm not sure. I just, that's my.
Okay, thank you. So Chris, I don't have that in front of me. I don't know if we can pull it up on the shared screen before Mr. Sparkle pulls his down. Chris, do we have that, that we can pull up to read?
I didn't give it to you. Pam can pull up the zoning bylaw. I have it in front of me, so I can read it and we can go through each one as I read them. If that would be suitable and maybe if Pam can find page 99, section 10.38 of the zoning bylaw.
I do have something, what you included in the email today. I did, I did. Let's see if that's what you're referring to.
I think that was 11.2.
Yeah, that's a different one.
Why don't I just read them?
Yeah, why don't you read it, Chris? Because that's what we normally do before Zoom.
So 10.380. The proposal is suitably located in the neighborhood in which it is proposed and/or the total town and is deemed appropriate by the special permit granting authority. Yes?
Yes.
Anybody disagree with that?
If you disagree, raise your hand and I will be watching for those. So Chris, you can keep going. I'll let you know if I see a raised hand.
10.381, the proposal is compatible with existing uses and other uses permitted by right in the same. You can say yes. You could also argue that the dimensional modification doesn't really have anything to do with uses, but if you really want to do belt and suspenders, you can just say yes.
I think, I'm seeing no hands in protest, Chris, so I think everyone's in agreement.
The proposal does not constitute, would not constitute a nuisance due to air and water pollution, flood, noise, odor, dust, vibration, lights, or visually offensive structures or site features.
I'm seeing no hands.
The proposal would not be a substantial injury or hazard to others, vehicles, or pedestrians.
Seeing no hands.
Yes, okay. 10.384, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use.
Agreement. I'm seeing no hands.
10.385, the proposal reasonably protects the adjoining premises against detrimental or offensive uses on the site, including air and water pollution, flood, noise, odor, dust, vibration, lights, or visually offensive structures or site features.
I do see Michael Burtwhistle.
I, I think it could be argued. And this is a complicated for me. We're talking about the special permit, which is essentially, we're not talking about the site plan review here. We're talking about the special permit, correct?
Correct.
I think it could be argued that the special permit the, the, the offensive structure, visually offensive structure is certainly, there is no visually offensive structure relative, the, the, the special permit is not concerned with that. But I think you could argue that the entire site plan is visually offensive to the neighborhood. It's not a question of the setback here. It's a question of the entire project. So there's, that's an issue and I don't, I don't know how to resolve that. I would be happy to have somebody tell me how to resolve that. I wanted, I wanted to bring this up in connection with 10.380. But I couldn't get to unmute myself quickly enough and raise my hand quickly enough. I've got a new system with my, my computer. But the, the suitably located in the neighborhood in which it is proposed, I, I would submit that it is certainly the, the setback question, the propos, the projecting element from the building that is in question is appropriate to the neighborhood. But I would still question whether or not the entire structure is appropriate to the neighborhood. I understand that the historical commission, the historic district commission has approved the, the proposal. And I'm, I am I am persuaded by that largely. But if we're making a finding specific to these quest, to these, to the language in 10.30, 38, sorry, then I'm not so sure about the question of suitably located and/or visual, and visually offensive in 10.10.380 and 10.385.
Chris Bestrip?
Well, that's why I usually try to limit. When we're making findings about dimensional modifications, I try to limit the finding to the specific dimensional modification rather than going through 10.38. Because 10.38 really relates more to the use, which is normally, you know, if this is a ZBA special permit for the use, you would go through all of these items here. So I, I think there's some reason not to go through 10.38, but Ms. McGowan thinks that it's a good idea and it's more strengthening of your decision. So it's possible that you could take a vote on each one of these if you wanted to. And if Mr. Burtwhistle wishes to disagree with 10.380 and 10.385, maybe that's, that's what we should do here. We should say, well, we have one, we have a kind of a, what is it? Five to one vote on 380, whether it is met or not, and a five to one vote on 10.385. I don't know. I mean, that's, that's one way to.
Maybe we vote to approve or not approve the special permit. I, I do agree with you, Chris, where we're sort of diving wider on the special permit than what we were actually what's been requested for a special permit. I see Janet's hand.
So a very similar, in, when we get to the site plan review, there's a very, very similar language and requirement about visually offensive structures and harmony, you know, like fitting in, you know, with abutting properties. So I think that as much as you might want to escape the issue, it's just going to show up again in the site plan review. So I think that maybe having a vote on that and having it, you know, five, one or whatever. But I understand Michael's, you know, qualm, basic qualm, but I think that, you know, the special permit and site plan review criteria are very similar and they're very overlapping, not quite though. I mean, special permit, permit is a little more rigorous, but we're going to have the same issue, or Michael will have the same question and issue when we get to site plan review and start reading through those criteria. So I think we just have to face it. And I just, you know, I know this seems like a tedious exercise. Be part of the new special permit criteria, sorry. And, you know, we're gonna, we're not going to have skipped any point. We'll be wearing our belt, our suspenders, our rain boots, you know, whatever. And so it takes a few minutes here and we might have some disagreements, but I think we should go forward.
Okay, well, what is the, what, may I speak?
Yes.
What is the conclusion about 10.385? Do, is there a general consensus?
I think Michael has spoken against it. Do we? I don't think we need to take a vote on each issue.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm simply raising a question. I, I don't necessarily want to vote against it. In fact, I, I don't want to vote against it in terms of the special permit request. Because I think the special permit request is, is a modificate, is a request to modify what is an existing design in place, which we theoretically will be approving in site plan review. And I, I think they're separate issues. And I am not concerned with the setback issue as according, with the whole building. I'm, I'm concerned with the whole building. So I don't really think we need to go into the issue of, of the set, the site, the setback. So I don't really think we need to go into the issue of, of the set, the site, the setback with, with, with great detail. I think we should just simply grant the setback modification. And if, in fact, I, if, I, I, and let, and let the issue of whether the building belongs on that site go to site plan review and not worry about it now.
Okay, well, your motion is on the floor. And Ms. McGowan wants to go through each one of these items. I am going to switch to, I see Doug's hand up and then Jack.
Well, I was just going to say that when I look at 10.38, the words suitably located mean to me, we're not putting a bar in a residential neighborhood. So putting this educational use into the neighborhood that we are talking about here seems perfectly appropriate without any further discussion. Thank you.
Thanks. Jack?
Yeah, I was, I was just, also, the, the historical commission's decision on this weighs heavily in terms of it fitting or not. So for me, it's a, you know, kind of a moot issue. I'd like to vote, you know, the special permit findings in it, in their entirety.
Okay. Chris, is there any more to read on those, since I can't see them?
Yes, there's several more. I can read them quickly. So I'm going to say about 10.385, general consensus, but some disagreement. 10.386 is, the proposal ensures that it is in conformance with the parking and sign regulations of this bylaw. So what you would have to say there is that this proposal has asked for modifications of the parking requirements and that when you get to the point of your site plan review, you will determine whether you're going to grant that parking modification or not. Right?
I'm going to put down Doug and Jack's hands. And if anyone has an issue, then re-raise your hand up. Keep going, Chris.
10.387, the proposal provides convenient and safe vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjacent streets, property, or improvements. If the Special Permit Granting Authority deems the proposal likely to have a significant adverse impact on traffic patterns, it shall be permitted to acquire a traffic impact report and the proposal shall comply with section 11.2437 of this bylaw. So they've asked for a waiver of the requirement for a traffic impact statement. So that's something that you would grant under your site plan review.
Right.
10.388 is, the proposal ensures adequate space for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles, goods, products, materials, and equipment incidental to the normal operation of the establishment or use.
Agreement. Not seeing any hands.
10.389, the proposal provides adequate methods of disposal and/or storage for sewage, refuse, recyclables, and other wastes resulting from the uses permitted or permissible on the site and methods of drainage for surface water.
I see no hands. Agreement.
Okay. 10.390 is not applicable because it talks about flood hazards and refers to the flood conservancy district, flood-prone conservancy district, and this is not in that district. So I think we would say it's not applicable here. 10.391, the proposal protects to the extent feasible, unique, or important natural, historic, or scenic features. And here you could refer to the local historic district commission certificate of appropriateness.
Agreement, Chris. I see no hands.
10.392, I'm going to see what page I'm on here. The proposal provides adequate landscaping, including the screening of adjacent residential uses, provision of street trees, landscape islands, and the parking lot, and a landscape buffer along the street frontage. When a non-residential use adjoins a residential district, an uninterrupted vegetative buffer shall, to the extent feasible, be established and maintained between buildings associated with uses under this section and the nearest residential property boundaries. I would say that they're, instead of providing a, an uninterrupted vegetated buffer, they're providing a, a stone wall in the direction of, in the northerly direction, and they're providing vegetation in the westerly direction.
I agree. I see no hand.
10.393, the proposal provides protection of adjacent properties by minimizing the intrusion of lighting, including parking lot and exterior lighting, reuse of cutoff luminaires, light shields, lowered height of light puddles, screening, or similar solutions. All exterior lighting shall be downcast and shall be directed or shielded to eliminate light trespass onto any street or abutting property and to eliminate direct or reflected glare perceptible to persons on any street or abutting property and sufficient to reduce the viewer's ability to see. All site lighting, including architectural, sign, and parking lot lighting, shall be kept extinguished outside of those business hours established under an approved site management plan, except for lighting determined to be necessary for site security and the safety of employees and visitors.
Agreement. I see no hands.
10.394, the proposal avoids to the extent feasible impact on steep slopes, floodplains, scenic views, gray changes, and wetlands. There really aren't any steep slopes or floodplains here and where substantial gray changes are wetlands. And in terms of scenic views, again, you could refer to the certificate of appropriateness that the local historic district granted and make a comment about the effort that has been made to keep the building out of the view shed of the adjacent property owned by harms by.
Agreement. See no hands.
The last, or excuse me, not the last one, but 10.395, the proposal does not create disharmony with respect to the terrain and to the use scale and architecture of existing buildings in the vicinity, which have functional or visual relationship thereto. Within the BN zone and others which are also mentioned, any res, and any residential zoning district where the project in question occurs within the boundaries of a national registered district, which this does. The board, the permanent granting authority shall, if it deems the proposal likely to have a significant impact on its surroundings, be permitted to use the design principles and standards set forth in the design review board section of the zoning bylaw to evaluate the design of the proposed architecture and landscape alterations. And again, I think that this has been reviewed by the local historic district commission with great detail with regard to the architectural features. So I think that there's really no necessity to invoke the design principles and standards of the design review board.
Agreement. I see no hands.
10.396, the proposal provides screening for storage areas, loading docks, dumpsters, rooftop equipment, utility buildings, and similar features. There are no dumpsters or rooftop equipment, no loading docks. There is a, there is a utility area out back, and there is screening around the utility area, both by the wall, the stone wall, and by the shrubbery that's provided to the west.
Agreement. I see no hands.
Okay, 10.397, the proposal provides adequate recreational facilities, open space, and amenities for the proposed use. I think this is an NA, not, not applicable. And the last one is the 10, the proposal of the master plan. Yes?
I, I see one hand, Janet McGowan. Janet, you're on mute. Janet, you can't.
My hair, sorry.
You have a tough connection. You keep breaking up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm kind of, I'm, I'm kind of in the national. I was going to say, recreational area, you know.
We're having a hard time understanding you. You're all gormled.
Skip me.
I'll try turning off a couple of mics and see if that makes a difference. Hold on. Chris, I'm just going to mute you for a minute. Everyone is muted except for Pam and I. Do you want to try again, Janet?
Yeah, I was just saying there is, you know, there's a whole empty lot for recreational space if it comes to that. So I think we talked about that during the hearing, so.
Okay, we could hear half of that. Your, your wifi must be a little rough wherever you are. Okay, Doug Marshall, I see his. Well, first, Doug, hold up. I'm going to call in Chris. I see her hand up, and then Doug, you're next. Oh, Chris, yeah.
I heard what Janet said. She said there's, there's no need to say that recreational requirement is not applicable because there is a recreational area in the empty lot next to the building, so we can say that instead of not applicable. Is that satisfactory?
I think she's nodding. Doug?
Yeah, I was going to have a slightly different argument to say I didn't think that it was not applicable, which is to say that I, that I find it is adequate for the proposed use, which says needs essentially no recreational space.
Chris, which do you think is best?
Oh, either one. But we could say it's adequate for the proposed use, which needs no recreational space, however, lot available next. Sorry, you didn't hear any of that.
Heard half of it, sorry. Could you say that again? So which one do you lean towards?
I'd say combine them.
Combine them.
Use which needs no recreational space, however, if recreational space is needed, there's an empty lot right next door to the west of the building. How about that?
That sounds wonderful. I see no other hands. Okay, we got through that. I think we're fully dressed and have raincoats and, and hard hats on. So at this time, are there any other?
I think you should go through footnote A.
Oh, where's, oh, what page is that on, do you know?
Page 81, it says, the requirement, meaning the dimensional requirement, may be modified under a special permit. In applying the criteria established in 395, the Special Permit Granting Authority shall consider the proposed modified dimensional requirement in the context of the pattern of the same dimensions established by existing buildings and landscape features in the surrounding neighborhood. So we can make a statement that you have found that the testimony presented by Mr. Sparkle with regard to setbacks on the other side of the street meets the, meets this requirement.
Yes.
Is that reasonable?
I think that's reasonable. I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay.
Anything else that we?
I think that's it.
Okay, so at this time, if there's any other comments or questions, either from the applicant or from the board members, I'm watching for hands.
I would have a very minor comment if permitted. And that's, that's to address Dorothy Pam's indication about the setbacks. I don't think it's a big deal, but if you were back at my screen, the, you know, I was really talking about the, the commercial buildings in the BN zoning district, and the Amherst Women's Club and the Henry Hills House are, are not that type of building whatsoever, and I don't believe are in the BN district, if I'm correct. So I was really trying to compare apples and apples to things that were closest, not only in proximity, but in, in use and functionality. There aren't a lot of pieces of property in downtown Amherst that are anything like the Amherst Women's, Women's Center or Club. So I'm, I'm glad we don't have to live up to the standards of that magnificent property.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands at this time. So I'm assuming that we are ready to vote on the special permit. Chris, is there anything else we need to do, or can we take a vote? Can take a vote. Okay, so I will do a roll call. Do we need, does anyone need to hear the motion again, or we good? No hands. Okay, so I'll do a roll call. This is for, actually, I'll say it's for SPP 2021-01, Amherst Community Television, DBA, Amherst Media, corner of Gray Street and Main Street, to approve their special permit request. So, Michael Burtwhistle?
Yes.
Maria Chow?
Approve.
Jack Jemsek?
Approve.
Doug Marshall?
Approve.
Janet McGowan?
Approve.
And myself, Christine Graham-Mullin, approve. So that's 600. And that closes out the special permit. So now we're going to go back to our site plan review. And I'll open it up to the board. Are there any questions or concerns that they want to ask about the site plan review? We also can comment on, we were sent, I'm digging here throughout our massive paper, findings and conditions that hopefully people gave a look to. I'm pulling out one right now. Okay, conditions and findings. Okay, so Janet. Janet, you are muted, so we cannot hear you. Can you hear me?
I'm so sorry. Um, I have a question, which is, can we vote on the site plan review and then add findings later? Because I have a bunch of findings I'd like to add to both. If the board votes to approve, again, strength in decision and refer to the testimony and evidence that we've seen. I don't want to go through it now, because I think it'd be kind of a tedious thing. So I wondered if we could vote, if the vote is to approve. I could send Christine Brestrop my, you know, supplement to her findings, and we could look at it, our next thing is, or is there a desire to wrap it all up tonight?
Are you, are you saying you want us to approve the site plan review and then you would send more findings to be added to it?
Or, um, I guess I'm just, I, I guess I could just, I'm just trying to, um, I, I'm asking how that's, if that could be done, and if it, if it seems.
Wouldn't we have to vote on those?
No, I'm just, I'm just, Chris. Okay, then I could just add findings now, okay?
I think that's how it works. So that would be great. So you have findings you want to add to the already draft findings list. And you have possible conditions. So normally, Chris, confirm with me, I would read through the draft findings, like what we're doing, and then if there's things to add, Chris, I see your hand up, feel free to talk. If you, you could probably say this better than me.
So what I would suggest is that Christine Graham-Mullin read the draft finding and then Janet add whatever she wants to add, and then the, there'd be discussion about whether others feel the same way for each of these things. And then in the end, Janet can send me her written document, and I can incorporate it into the findings. But you should make your findings before you take your vote, because you're going to vote on the findings and the conditions and the waivers and to approve the site plan review. So it should all be.
So we wouldn't want people to think that board members are, you know, slipping their stuff in later. We want to do it as a board and make it look like it is unity.
They had slipped it a little earlier. I'm just on vacation this week, so I didn't get to that. Okay.
Okay. Jack, vice chair, I'm going to ask a favor of you. Wake up, you're in your sunflower field there. If you could do what I was doing for Chris, can you watch the hands and let me know if a hand goes up while I'm reading, because Chris is writing?
Okay.
I, I can have Pam doing other things too, but.
And I wasn't, I was not sleeping. I was, I was.
I didn't accuse you of sleeping.
I was slouching.
You were slouching in your field of flowers. So I'm gonna read, you know, just so y'all know, you'll probably see, it's a page and a half. It's about what, what Chris read. So if you want to add or you want something in that section, please raise your hand. And Jack, either say approve, Jack, no hands, or call on their hand. Okay. All right, the board found under section eleven point two four of the zoning bylaw, site plan review as follows. Eleven point two four zero zero, the project is in conformance with all the appropriate provisions of the zoning bylaw. The applicant is applying for a special permit to modify the front setback requirement under footnote A of table three to overcome the apparent doubling of the setback requirement in section six point six zero of the zoning bylaw for educational and religious uses. The applicant is also applying for a modification of the parking requirements under section seven point nine of the zoning bylaw. Eleven point two four zero one, town amenities and abutting properties will be protected through minimizing detrimental or offensive actions. The proposed use of the property is unlikely to create detrimental or offensive actions. Eleven point two four zero two, abutting properties will be protected from detrimental site characteristics resulting from the proposed use. Lights will be downcast or shielded. Eleven point two four zero three, NA, provision of recreational facilities is not relevant to this use. Just saying, do we want to make it the same as we had with the special permit?
Yes. I'll do that, so eleven point two four zero three, reference special permit finding. Yes, thank you.
Eleven point two fours one zero, unique or important natural, historic, or scenic features will be protected. The local historic district commission held seven public meeting sessions, hearing sessions with the applicant and worked with the applicant to resolve design issues, eventually agreeing to a building that fits well in its surroundings. The local historic district commission issued a certificate of appropriateness for the building in January, and the new building will not, will not block views of the historic, the women's club, or the Henry F. Hills House, since the building is confined to the eastern side of the site, and the grassy area to the west is maintained as open space. Eleven point two one one, I'm sorry, point two four one one, the project provides adequate methods of refuse disposal as described in.
We have a hand.
Okay, Michael. Thank you, Jack.
Yeah, uh, back to the previous one. I'm kind of lost. Where are we?
We're in eleven point two four one zero, unique and important natural, historic, or scenic feature.
A third line, resolved design issues, eventually agreeing to a building that fits in. I would suggest that we say that eventually agreeing that the building fits in well with its surroundings, because there's a little difference. They agreed that the building fits in well. When you say agreeing to a building that fits in well, what you're saying is that you're making the decision that the building fits in well. The historic commission made that decision. We can agree with it or not. I tend not to. But I think it's, it's more appropriate of what they did, just to use, to use that, that language. Eventually agreeing that a, the building fits in well.
Makes sense.
You want to see that, Chris? Yeah.
Agreeing to that the building fits.
Eventually agreeing that the building fits in well.
Fits in well.
That proposed building, if you.
Did you get that, Chris? I'm not seeing any hands of disagreement, so, um, all right. Is that it, Michael?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna go to eleven point two four one two. Uh, Jack, if you're back on. The project will be connected to town sewer and water, and the town engineer has reviewed and has not expressed concerns about the town services or their ability to serve the proposed use. Eleven point two four one three, the proposed drainage system within and adjacent to the site will be adequate to handle the stormwater. The town engineer has reviewed and has not expressed concerns about the proposed stormwater management system. Eleven point two four one four, provision of the adequate landscaping has been addressed, and the project includes new plantings on site. Eleven point two four one five, the soil erosion condition, uh, control methods are considered adequate to control soil erosion both during and after construction. Eleven point two four one six, adjacent properties will be protected by minimizing the intrusive intrusion of various nuisances. A construction logistics plan is required to be submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit. Eleven point two four one seven, adjacent properties will be protected from the intrusion of lighting, because a condition of the permit requires that exterior lighting be downcast or shielded, and/or shielded, and not shine onto adjacent properties. Eleven point two four one eight, NA, the property is not located in a flood-prone conservation, uh, conservancy district. Eleven point two four one nine, NA, there is no wetlands on or within a hundred feet of the property. Eleven point two four two zero, the planning board did not choose to refer to the design principles or standards set forth in sections three point three zero four zero and three point two zero four one of the zoning bylaw, because of the local historic district commission has done a thorough review of the building design and its location on the site and has issued a certificate of appropriateness. Eleven point two four two one, the development is reasonably considered with respect to setbacks, placement of parking, landscaping, and entrances and exits with surrounding buildings and development. The applicant is applying for a special permit to modify the front setback requirement under footnote A of table three to overcome the apparent doubling of the setback requirement in section six point six zero of the zoning bylaw for educational and religious uses. Eleven point two four two two, building sites shall avoid, to the extent feasible, the impact on sleep, steep slopes, floodplains, scenic views, and gray changes and wetlands. There is no steep slopes or floodplains on this, on the site. The applicant has located the proposed building to be mostly outside of the view to or from the women's club and the Henry Hill, Henry F. Hills House. There is no serious gray change proposed, and there's no wetlands on or near the property. Eleven point two four two three, NA, there is only one building proposed for the site. Eleven point two four two four, screening has been provided as appropriate via a stone wall at the north side of the property and via a slope and set of plantings along the west edge of the parking lot. Eleven point two four three zero, the site has been designed to provide for the convenience and the safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement, both within the site and in relation to the adjoining ways and properties. The parking lot, although tight, has been carefully designed to allow backup and turning movements and pedestrian circulation. Eleven point two four three one, the location of the curb cut has been designed to minimize turning movements and hazardous exits and entrances, and the applicant has submitted a plan showing turning movements within the parking lot. The town engineer has reviewed the location of the curb cut in relation to the intersection of Main Street and Gray Street, and has found the location to be satisfactory. Eleven point two four three two, the location and design of the parking spaces, bicycle racks, drive aisles, loading areas, and sidewalks have been, um, have been provided in a safe and convenient manner. Eleven point two four three three, NA, provision for the access to adjoining properties is not an issue. Eleven point two four three four, the proposed driveway is located almost opposite one of the driveways from four four six Main Street. What's that? Eleven point two four three five, NA, joint access driveways between the adjoining properties is not an issue, since the adjacent property has an existing driveway on the other northern side of the property. Eleven point two four three six, requirement for, um, submission of a traffic impact statement has been waived. There is very little traffic expected to enter or leave the site, and traffic at the site does not overturn, uh, overlap in terms of timing with traffic to and from the nearby school. Eleven point two four three seven, NA, no traffic import, no traffic impact report will be required. The end. All right, so that's findings. Uh, I'm not seeing any hands for additional findings. I can move straight on to the conditions. Oh, I just saw two hands. Jack, well, first Jack, Chris Bester, and then Jack. Sorry, it always trumps you.
I would, who's going first?
Chris is gonna go first, just to make whatever she, and then you. Thanks. Yes, Chris.
Janet has some additional findings that she would like to describe to you before you vote on these findings.
Okay, so I'll go to Jack, and then I'll go to Janet. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say for eleven point two four three six, that, uh, mentioned the bus stop somewhere in there. Uh, you know, public transportation is proximal, very proximal, uh, to the site, you know.
Good addition.
Yeah.
Anything else, Jack?
Nope.
Okay, so I'll move to Janet. Janet, um, just so I can find space on paper, how many findings are you proposing? Janet, you're muted, so we can't hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna skip the additional findings, but I do have a question about whether, um, about the waiver, the parking requirement. Do we have to vote on that separately, or does it have to be mentioned in the findings that we, the board has agreed to waive parking requirement based on the information presented to it about very little need for parking?
I assume that's under the, go ahead, Chris.
Um, when you make the motion about the site plan review, you will include the findings, the conditions, and the waivers. And if you want to know exactly what the waivers are, I can tell you, they are in the, um, in the document that has been disappeared from my desk here. The development application report that was part of your packet for July fifteenth had the waivers.
Chris, I think I have that.
Pam has that, the application report that was in the packet for July fifteenth, so that lists waivers.
Great.
Okay, then you can, um, you can see what waivers were requested. This is the special permit.
Yeah, I just have to get there. Hold on.
I don't have that within my, here, so I'd love to see that again. Thank you.
Okay, here we are.
Oh, here they are.
Waivers. Traffic impact statement, number of parking spaces, and the proximity of parking driveways to the building.
Okay.
Those were the three waivers, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, Pam, could you pop up? You probably have it, the possible conditions? This might be easy for people to see it while I read this, which I have to warn everyone, it's even longer than my last bit. There they are. Okay, so let me, Jack, are you back on? Can you watch hands? Uh, Jack, your hand is actually up. Do you have something to say? Jack?
Yes, I'm here.
So I'm gonna read, if you can kind of watch hands again, and, um, and Chris is gonna scribble away and check, so, okay. So this is possible conditions for a site plan review for Amherst Media, SPR twenty twenty dash eleven. All right, under general, number one, development shall be built substantially in accordance with the plans submitted to the planning board and approved on, and Chris, we just leave these blank for now because we don't know?
That's right.
Number two, development shall be managed substantially in accordance with the management plan submitted to the planning board and approved on, to be determined. Three, upon a change of ownership, or if the property is no longer managed by Amherst Media, the new owner and/or manager shall submit a new management plan to the planning board at the public meeting for its review and approval. The purpose of the meeting shall be for the board to determine whether conditions of a permit are being complied with and whether any modifications to the site plan review, approval, or management plan is required. Sorry, I just saw Chris threw me off. Chris, are you trying to say something?
I wanted to say something about the Massengill letter, which mentions this condition. I think he misunderstood the condition, because this condition applies if somebody's coming in and doing essentially what Amherst Media is doing now, but it's a different company. If there's a change in use, the building commissioner would look at that change in use and determine whether it is similar enough to Amherst Media's use that someone could just bring in a new management plan to the planning board, or if it's substantially different from Amherst Media's use, in which case they would be required to file a new site plan review or special permit application. So this is really just for, say, Amherst Media changed its name, or say, a new company took over from Amherst Media to do essentially what Amherst Media is doing, they would come back to the planning board with a change in a management plan. Otherwise, it would be a whole new ball of wax, and it would go through the building commissioner, and he would determine that it needs either a site plan review or a special permit for a new use.
Thank you for identifying that and clarifying. Thank you, Chris. Number four, all exterior lighting shall be dark sky compliant. Exterior lighting shall be downcast, shielded, or shall not shine onto adjacent properties or streets. Five, changes to the project and/or substantial changes to any approved site plans or to the exterior of the building shall be submitted to the planning board for its review and approval prior to the work taking place. The purpose of the submittal shall be for the planning board to approve the change and/or determine whether the changes are de minimis or significant enough to require modification of the special permit or the site plan review approval. Six, landscaping shall be installed in accordance with the landscaping plan prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, and once installed, shall be continually maintained. All disturbed areas shall be loomed and seeded otherwise, unless otherwise specified. Construction section, number seven, prior to the, Chris, I just want to say, um, didn't we in the past decide, like, number nine, we can just say a construction logistics plan and not read, like, I through J? Can I do that?
You don't have to read them, but I think the building commissioner would encourage you to keep them in here.
Oh, keep them in, but do I have to, can I just say, read the first, like, a construction logistics plan should be provided at the pre-construction meeting? And, and cover, shall cover the following items, A through J?
Yes.
And I, okay, and I see Doug Marshall, your hand.
Okay.
I don't see you, but, uh.
Yeah, I'm here.
There you are. Hello.
Yeah, I, uh, number six. Uh, in, in my experience, it's not uncommon for the landscaping to be, to, to wait to install the landscaping until you get to either the right time of year for planting shrubs and that kind of thing, which could be after the certificate, certificate of occupancy, or at least the temporary certificate of occupancy has been issued. So, you know, I think, I don't know what the practice here is in this town, but I think it might be a benefit to the owner to have a requirement that the landscaping be installed within six months of the certificate of occupancy, or something like that.
I agree. Chris, has this ever come up before?
So what usually happens is that someone applies for a temporary certificate of occupancy and gets into the building and then finishes up the last few things that need to be finished. And the building commissioner is generous in his acceptance of the fact that landscaping is often not installed at the time that the building is finished, and a temporary certificate of occupancy is, um, is issued. So this wording seems to be working in our world, but if you would like to modify it, you, you can do that. But this, it, it's worked in the past, and it seems like the building commissioner can, can work with this language.
That's fine, let's leave it. If that's, like I said, I don't know the practice in town.
Sure, and now that Chris has said it, that is, I guess, how it's worked in the past, and, and you, and there haven't been complaints, Chris.
Oh, there are always complaints, yep.
Everything gets worked out.
Works out in the end, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, number, under construction, number seven, prior to the issuance of any building permit, a pre-construction meeting shall be scheduled with the applicant, the applicant's contractor, the town engineer, the building commissioner, the superintendent of public works, planning staff, and the fire chief, and any other staff personnel that may have a role in the construction of the project. Eight, a written construction fire management plan shall be submitted to the fire chief and building commissioner prior to the issuance of a building permit. Nine, a construction logistics plan shall be provided at the pre-construction meeting and shall cover all the following items, A through J. Number ten, a construction logistics plan shall be subject to the following conditions as listed, A through D.
Um, wait, wait.
Yeah, there is, I, I just noticed this.
Pam flipped the page.
Come again? Come again?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, and there is, this condition may need to be amended. There's some question on B? Before I just, Chris, is that something we need to, whoop, we need to address right now? On number 10, whoa. 10, there we go, 10B, Chris.
Ask Mr. Sparkle what his plans are for parking for contractors. I believe he said to me recently, or it was written in an email, that parking for contractors would be accommodated on the site, and so this condition can apply. So I don't think it needs to be amended, but we might want to confirm that with Mr. Sparkle.
Mr. Sparkle?
Yes, and I'm actually taking this on the word of the expected site contractor. They do anticipate keeping all construction equipment and materials on the site during the project, and they'll just be doing a little bit of do-si-do as the project continues from one area to the other in intensity.
Do-si-do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, great. So I'll move on. Doug, I see your hand popped up.
Yeah, Mr. Sparkle just said equipment and materials would be on the site. He did not say all the contractor parking?
Oh, you know, I guess I think of vehicles as equipment, but, yes, so the park, parking also onsite. I think we can get everybody on there, yes.
So nobody parking on Gray Street?
That's the most important thing, yes. I mean, perhaps a contractor might find other places, other properties off-street to stage materials. They sometimes do that at their own convenience, but we're not going to be occupying the public right of way for this construction process. Thanks for the clarification, Doug.
Excellent. 11, as part of the building permit application, the applicant shall provide the building commissioner, the name, address, and business telephone number of the project manager or onsite supervisor, who shall be responsible for all activities on the project site. 12, there shall be no exterior construction activity, including fueling of vehicles on the project site before 7:00 AM or after 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. There shall be no construction on the project site on the following legal holidays, New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, or July 4th, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. The applicant agrees that the hours of operation shall be enforced by the Amherst Police Department and/or Inspection Services. 13, the project site shall be fenced during construction. 14, appropriate measures shall be taken to control dust, dirt, debris, and construction materials on the site. Water for dust control shall be trucked in from off-site unless otherwise approved by the Department of Public Works. 15, all catch basins shall be protected from soil and debris contamination during construction, and shall be cleaned at the end of construction. 16, no stumps, demolition material, or construction debris shall be buried or disposed of at the project site. 17, the town engineer and the building commissioner shall inspect the construction of the entry driveway and all onsite paved areas for conformance to town standards. 18, the applicant shall provide as-built plans that show building location, grades, accessways, parking areas, sidewalks, and walkways, curbing, stormwater management facilities, lighting, and utilities to the building commissioner, town engineer, and to be placed with the site plan review decision in the planning department. 19, the final certificate of occupancy shall not be issued until, A, final top coat of paving for all driveways and access areas, sidewalks, and berms have been completed; B, landscaping as shown on the plan of record has been installed; C, as-built plans have been submitted to the building commissioner and the town engineer by all the design professionals from the site and building construction, and have been approved by the building commissioner and town engineer. 20, a temporary certificate of occupancy may be granted by the building commissioner. Any incomplete work may require a bond. Okay, I see Michael Burtwistle has his hand up. Michael, what number?
There we go. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Number, number 20. Any complete work will require a bond, as opposed to may require a bond? We've been going back and forth about bonding a bit lately, so maybe we ought to be more specific about that. Will require a bond.
We don't always require, I mean, are you talking about the, the three-party agreement kind of thing for subdivisions?
We've been talking about various kinds of bond with, with the subdivision, with the exchange of properties, lot one, lot eight, lot four for lot seven. This is the third time, well, there are three times bonding has come up in recent months.
Right, right. Maybe Chris can talk about this more, but I think that's for subdivisions, and this is.
Well, this is, I mean, here, maybe require a bond. I'm just saying, could it?
Chris, can you give any examples where a bond would be required?
Well, I think if someone were, were not able to complete, say, the planting in time for what they need as a final certificate of occupancy, then they could be required by the building commissioner to get a bond, but that would be up to the building commissioner, and he has control over that process, because he can refuse to grant the final certificate of occupancy if people don't comply. So they, it's sort of a negotiation at the end of a project. If, for some reason, the winter's been really bad, and they haven't been able to get into the site, but they really need a final certificate of occupancy, but they haven't completed all the planting, or the seeding, or the seeding isn't working out well, or something like that, then the building commissioner can say, "Well, I will issue a certificate of occupancy, a final one, but you need to give me a bond." So it's, it's kind of giving the building commissioner the ability to do that. He can do it anyway, but this is putting the developer on notice that the building commissioner may do this. So it is a little different from the subdivision, because the subdivision really, the building commissioner doesn't have much to do with that. It's really all the town engineer who, you know.
Right, different parties. And Chris, do you know if this has happened many times in the last?
It's happened, it happened recently because of when East Pleasant Street.
I remember this, yeah.
Investments stated that they would work with the town to design and install signage for the West Cemetery, to direct people back to the West Cemetery from North Pleasant Street, and they never really followed through on that. So the building commissioner got them to put a bond, I think $25,000 bond up, because they wanted a final certificate of occupancy for the building, but they hadn't complied with that requirement. So he's got a $25,000 bond to make that happen, even though they didn't make it happen themselves. So that's the kind of thing that, that would be useful. Does that explain it?
Is that, does, so, is, does the existing wording sound okay, Michael?
I was gonna suggest, why don't we, why don't we insert the phrase, "at the building commissioner's discretion," after bond?
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah. And I think that's the end. So are there any other questions, or any other conditions that anyone wants to add? Any other last questions for the applicant? I'm not seeing any hands. Chris, do you have any last statements, or at this point, could we take a motion?
Doug Marshall had his hand raised.
I'm starting up. I see it back up.
Yeah, I was just gonna remind everybody, we need to make sure those three waivers are included in the motion.
Yeah, we will, in the motion, close the public hearing. You want to include the conditions, the findings, and the waivers. Anyone feel motivated? I do. Doug? And then I see Maria.
Well, I mean, I guess I will move that we close the public hearing, and, what was it, include the waivers, the findings, and the conditions?
Yeah, the findings, conditions, and the waivers.
And approve the site plan review?
Yes, for approval.
Move that we approve the site plan review.
Excellent. And a second from Maria. Okay, so that's on the table. Any other questions from the board members? I see Jack's hand.
Yeah, I just forget, the three waivers, can we say what those are again? I'm just.
There's the parking waiver, there's the traffic impact statement, and the proximity to the, someone help me, the parking.
Proximity of parking driveways to the building.
Yes, that's it. Thanks, Pam.
You're welcome.
I'm seeing no other hands. I see Michael's hand.
Did we have a second on the motion?
Yes, Maria, and, Michael, your hand's up, but you are muted.
Okay, thank you. I, I want to say that I intend to vote yes on this site plan approval, even though I think this is the wrong building in the wrong place. Unfortunately, we are bound by a bad decision that town meeting made some years ago to rezone this piece of property. And that gives the owner of the property essentially the right to build the building that they're proposing. I think the historic district commission has done a wonderful job trying to make this building reasonable for the site. And in fact, since the building has, since the owners have the right to build the building, they've done about the best they can do. I just need to register the fact that I believe this building should never have been built there, that the land should never have been rezoned, and that this, this building destroys the remaining ground space that fronts the Hills House and the Women's Club. And it's, it's, for me, it's a great shame that the building is being built there. Nonetheless, I'm afraid the owner has the right to do it, so I will vote yes.
Any other comments? Chris?
I just wanted to note that prior to this land being rezoned, I believe that the land had been divided into two frontage lots, and at that time, it was in the RG zoning district. So if this rezoning hadn't occurred, two individual, single-family homes could have been built on each of those lots, or, excuse me, one single-family home could have been built on each of those lots in the RG district. So the result probably would have been, well, that was prior to the local historic district commission having been formed, so I don't know what would have happened then, but in any, in any event, I just wanted to say that that would, that would have been a possibility back then, before this property was rezoned, that two single-family homes could have been built here, and the planning board wouldn't have had any control, and the zoning board wouldn't have had any control. And so it would have actually marred the view of these two buildings significantly. Just wanted to remind everyone of that.
Thank you, Chris. That was important history to hear. I'm seeing no other hands at this time, so I think we're ready to do a roll call vote. If you have something to say, speak now. See nothing. And I'm sorry, I have to sneeze. All right, fought it off. Okay, Michael Burtwistle.
Yes.
Okay, and just, this is for the site plan review. And Michael Burtwistle said yes. Maria Chow?
Approve.
Jack Jemsek?
Approve.
Doug Marshall?
Approve.
Janet McGowan? I barely hear Janet.
Approve.
Okay, thank you, and Christine Graham Ullin, approve. So that's 600. Mr. Sparkle, are you still there? I want to thank you, and Amherst Media for all your hard work.
It's a pleasure working with the town. Thank you very much, and Chris, thank you for the history as well.
Great, good luck, and we are very indebted as a town to Amherst Media. They do a lot for the town, so I'm pleased for them that they can start to move forward with this, because I do think there'll be a lot of benefits for the town as a whole. And with that, I think we can move on to our next item.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And we're gonna go to item four, which is old business, and number, oh, yeah, okay. Number one, zoning, review priorities list for zoning amendments. And Pam, if I can request for you to put up that, the old 2019. So I just want to sort of premise this where we're at. This is an old table that has been, and I'm gonna turn it over to Maria Chow, who is the chair of the zoning subcommittee, and probably has the most history with this, but, and she can go into this table. I was surprised when I dove deep, kind of how out of date and confusing it kind of is. The end goal, what I'm hoping for tonight, is for us to come up with sort of a top hits of requests, suggestions to town council and our planning department staff. On, of all this stuff, and, you know, there's a lot, and I asked the board to all kind of come with their top three in their own head, and then we can kind of compile them, and, because that list will go to Chris Bestra, and it will go to Rob Mora, our building commissioner, and it will also go to CRC, because everybody's trying to do this right now and come up with prioritization, and this will be compiled into a bigger effort, so, and then hearing from town council what, what they think they want to, how they want to attack it in a, in a prioritization level. So I'm gonna turn over to Maria. Are you there, Maria? And maybe you can talk about this a little bit, and what you're thinking.
Yeah, just a tiny bit, because I think most of the existing planning board members have seen this for years now. And basically, the short history of it is that it was created by the last zoning subcommittee, Greg Stutzman, Rob Crowner, and I, and with Chris Bestra's help, of course, where we took literally over a decade's worth of notes, town meeting articles, and issues that the planning department had been dealing with, and tried to call it down to the big picture priorities. There's a whole bunch of other smaller, more specific technical issues that then we compiled into just like a Word document, but this is sort of big picture. And it was good we reviewed it for today's agenda, because I realized we, as a zoning company, had put our own, when we organized it, we already prioritized things before we even gave a chance for other people to prioritize it, in that we prioritized the five top columns, you see, housing, downtown, village centers, and zoning bylaw, repair, and overhaul. We've already said, like, those are the five priorities. And then under each one, we then said, here are objectives or strategies to improve each of those five priorities. So I could see how this chart was a little confusing, because it's already kind of setting a tone. So, yeah, I'm really curious to hear what other planning board members are sort of, their big sort of red button kind of things they really want to get to. And I appreciated Michael's focus on housing. I share that sort of passion in creating a more diverse stock for Amherst. And so I guess, you know, if we, you know, whether you want to rewrite this whole chart, or just have a sort of list of 10 items, I'm up for, you know, however you guys want to organize it. But this is basically a collection of a lot of issues from decades of work that the town has done. So, yes, it's outdated, and there's a lot of things that are a little too specific, maybe, for what we want to present to town council. But I'd like to hear more people's response to this. Greg actually did so many presentations of this chart, and I was there for all of them, and I cannot do what he did, where he literally went through every single one and explained the history and the reason why it's on this chart, and I can't do that. I am just not mentally capable of doing that. Maybe Chris Bestra can, but I'm not sure we need to do that right now. I think I would just like to hear what other people, what their sort of priorities are. I did have a chance to read Michael's, and it was really useful, but, yeah, I'd like to just open up and see what other people's, you know, priorities are, and to not necessarily follow this chart, but just to use it as like a springboard to, you know, other ideas.
That's a good way of saying it. This is a great framework that can springboard to that list that we want to forward.
Exactly.
You know, can we find agreement on, you know, I'm thinking somewhere between seven, max 10, you know, we don't want to make too long of, like, a whole unrealistic, but maybe thinking about is. But maybe thinking about is, is town council moves forward and over the next year. I know their elections are, oh, Chris, maybe you can help me. Is that October of this year or November of this year? When do they have their elections? Does anyone remember? Because I know they want to make their dent. They want to start taking action on this. So if reasonably, if we can sort of keep to, what are we highly recommending in a perfect world? What they could sort of get done in the next, well, I guess it's about a year and a half, or a little shy of that. Chris, I see your hand, and then Doug's.
I just wanted to acknowledge that Doug had sent me an email that I didn't get a chance to post on the website, so I didn't circulate it to you, but he did list several things that he thought were important priorities, and I'm sure he'll present them himself, but I wanted to apologize to him for that. And I, I did manage to post Michael's email and chart, because that was received a little bit earlier. I think that was received last week. So those are two board members that I heard from, and I have my own list of priorities, but I can save those for, for later. And so that's all I wanted to say.
Well, Chris, maybe as we're kind of, I'm using the word grinding through this and establishing our list, you know, what you're thinking might help if we're having difference of opinions on what people are thinking is reasonable to attack first or whatever. So please speak up if, if we're sort of headed down the wrong path. I also think we should, and this is, we can determine, I was thinking we give them the list and we say, we don't, like, it's not weighted or prioritized, we feel they're all equal. Or keep in mind, we can say, you know, we could number like the first three and then not number the rest. You know what I think I'm saying. So think about how we're presenting it to them, too. And, and we could incorporate a memo with it, you know, Chris could do that also, explaining some of her thinking if so needed. So, Chris, Doug, no, Chris, I see hands popping up and down. Doug?
Oh, well, I put my hand down when I thought Chris was going to read what I sent her. But, and since I don't actually have that email available at the moment, I'll, I'll try to remember what I sent. And Chris, please correct me. It seemed to me that when I essentially got the charge to, I guess it was somehow the invitation to be on the, on the planning committee focused on improving the vitality of downtown. So it seemed to me that we really ought to be focusing on downtown. I know there's the master plan envisioned multiple village centers, but I think we ought to start downtown and fix downtown before we spread our efforts out in other areas. So I was suggesting that we work on the, the actual physical zone and the dimensional requirements for the BG zone and the BL zone. And I think my third was to do with clarification of mixed-use buildings. And then I think I, what I said to Chris was that if she thought that the BL and BG zones were really one conversation, that my alternate third item would be the reformatting of the bylaw.
Recodification.
Yeah, I mean, I spent a fair amount of time looking at the Newton, Massachusetts zoning bylaw, because I figured they're a well-run town with lots of resources, and if anybody can do it right, it's probably them. So, you know, it looks a lot different than ours. And, you know, it seems like a model worth following, but I'm sure there's others as well. I'll stop there.
Thank you. I also watch Arlington, Massachusetts. Theirs has some really good stuff, and they've been redoing it. So I'm sure Rob Moore and Chris are looking at these, too. Does anyone have any comments? Those are really good starting points, Doug. I like the breaking it out like first downtown and then doing some bullets under it on specifics to that, which I heard you say BG dimensional, BL dimensional clarification to the mixed use. I also want to just toss out there, if anyone's thinking inclusionary zoning is very complicated, but maybe it could just be focused for downtown, and design guidelines are another thing for downtown. So I see Michael's hand.
Yes. Pam, could you put up this, the this, the chart that I sent in? I see several other charts on the, on the other, on the page. Is there a comparison chart?
Well, we got this one that I believe came from Jack.
Okay.
And then, so then I took this one. And this slide isn't that terrific, because I squeezed it in. And then these two.
I just didn't know what all those others were.
Yeah, that's what it is. So this one is yours, Michael.
Okay, I'd be happy to talk about mine for a second. My sense, I, when I looked through the chart that was sent to us in the, in the packet, it seemed extremely redundant in several different categories. Form-based code was mentioned in several different, in several columns. The parking was mentioned in several categories, and the mixed-use standards were mentioned in several categories. And I think those are all important. But I, what I did is I combined all those several mentions into one particular category, one particular category. So they're only listed once in the charts that I've, I've sent in. I think the most important thing that we need to do is, and I'm not sure what exactly it is, but it has to do with encouraging varied and more housing, particularly at the lower end of the scale. Now, whether that's something that needs to go in downtown or in the village centers or both, I'm not so concerned with at this point. So I think I'm, I'm saying that rather than Doug's focus on downtown, I think we should focus on housing and its multiple approaches. And one of the issues there is clearly the inclusionary zoning. Another one is the standards and conditions relative to mixed-use buildings. So those, those two things, the mixed-use building standards and the development of affordable housing through the, I lost the word, lost the phrasing. Inclusionary zoning are the two places where I think we should go, and the third and fourth are up to other people.
So those are your top three? Right, because there's a lot there, Michael. So what would be your top three?
It's, it's hard to put them, they all kind of link together in a lot of ways. And I'm not sure that top three is really a useful thing. I think working on housing in its multiple incarnations and aspects is what we should be doing. That includes things like mixed-use, mixed-use definitions and clarity. It includes things like affordable housing.
Inclusionary zoning.
And yeah, inclusionary zoning and small houses on small lots, all the stuff that's basically under the housing column. Although I'm not sure where the 40R district planning process falls in that. I don't know where we are relative to that, because we haven't been talking about that much. And we supposedly have a presentation on that at some point in the near future, but it's unclear who's, you know, that's, that's all up in the air. So I haven't listed that as something that I think is important, but it's the housing issues for me.
For housing, would that include, you know, two or three families by right?
Absolutely.
Expanding supplemental dwelling?
Absolutely.
Reducing single-family zoning only in some districts?
Absolutely. Considering all those things. I'm not necessarily advocating all those things, but I'm advocating that.
Right, they're on the list. So I'm going to call on Maria, because this is really Maria's area. So if we can define some of those down, Maria, we can put that on the list for people to consider.
Yeah, no, that's been something I really had hoped to work on more, but then all this stuff happened with COVID. And then Rob Mora, before COVID, was like thinking about zoning bylaw rewrite, and so was town council. But yeah, I think Michael's exactly right. I think the key word is unlocking housing, because a lot of our parcels just are locked up. They, you know, particularly downtown, they're just unable to have residential allowed. And also, yeah, if we better define mixed use or apartments, we could also, again, unlock the ability to do denser, high quantity of housing type. So those are like for, so I guess to say to town council, one of my priorities would be housing, and then it's basically unlocking the ability to create a diversity of housing stock. But so that's, you know, both apartments and mixed use, which would help revitalize downtown.
The diversity is the key word there.
Exactly, right, right. And so somehow we want to include inclusionary, you know, requirements within that kind of use. Then there's the sort of missing middle I keep bringing up in previous meetings, where we create the ability for new families to move in, whether it's through infill or unlocking the ability of parcels to by right have multifamily units or supplemental dwell. Well, supplemental dwellings are already by right, but sometimes you need a special permit for certain types.
Exactly.
So just really unlocking the ability for both individual property owners as well as developers to really bring a diversity of housing stock. So I guess the way to phrase that as one big umbrella statement would be good for town council. And then like you were listing off, Christine, all of those are ways to do that. There are so many strategies to do it, and so I think we need to not say one is a solution. We just need to create a toolbox. And I can't say one is a priority and the other as far as like the type of housing, but some of the easier ones might be just unlocking property owners' rights. You know, people will be able to put ADUs and extra, like a duplex or triplex on property. So that requires study. It's not like you can just rewrite it in the zoning and hope for the best. You know, it does require some careful study of our residential zones. And then, yeah, looking at downtown as far as how to unlock certain parcels, like Doug had mentioned, the BL and BG, where you just simply aren't allowed right now because of the lot requirements, lot size requirements. So yeah, housing is my number one, I think, because I think that solves a lot of things and brings a lot of things to our town. It touches on downtown. It touches on some zoning repair that needs to happen. And so I don't know if we need to like list specific objectives or strategies. I think I would like to just present to town council that housing, creating a diversity of housing stock or unlocking the ability to create a diversity of housing stock would be like my number one, because that's a really broad umbrella, and so I think it covers a lot of the other issues. Downtown's certainly an issue, but I think if we can get more housing, more people down there, make it more walkable, that will actually resolve a lot of things.
And particularly emphasizing the toolbox aspect of it all.
Yeah, a diversity of types, exactly. Yeah.
So I see a couple more hands, just to sort of try to pair this. So what I'm seeing is three evolved with some subcategories, because I think suggesting some tools in the toolbox will be helpful for them, because they look to us as the experts and that, you know, we understand all these, these new parts. So I'm seeing downtown, and under that, you know, Chris can help us pull this together, and then we could review it, you know, for the next meeting. The BG, the BL, you know, inclusionary zoning and clarification mixed use. But number two is the housing, unlocking the diversity of housing. And there can be suggestions in there about the two or three family, you know, by right, expanding ADU and supplemental options, infill, you know, removing the single-family only dwelling and allowing other densification of certain zoning districts. So, and then the third one I see is recodification and supporting that whole effort. And that, I kind of like how, and then sort of leaving out the villages is what I'm hearing a little bit. I just want to throw out downtown, if anyone feels that design guidelines would be helpful in the next year and a half. We do have some drafts to start with from a 40R consultant. And so at that, I'm throwing it back out. Jack and then Janet. Jack, yeah.
Yeah, so I agree. You know, housing is huge downtown, very important, recodification. But just looking at some of the light items there that, that pop out at me, you know, I just, I just, you know, that BL zone is so dysfunctional, that really bugs me that, that we have a zone, you know, in our prescribed, you know, on our bylaws and map, that, that doesn't work for anyone. That's embarrassing. And I think in terms of village centers, I, I think those are important. I, I think North Amherst is in good shape with the development that's going on there. I think, I mean, Atkins Corner is good. Christman Village, I'm not so sure about. I haven't really seen much there. But I do think East Amherst and the Pomeroy Village, South Amherst, I think they can, I would not lose sight of those when we're talking about, you know, areas within town, when, you know, for example, downtown. And certainly, the, the thing that keeps on coming up is the parking requirements. We certainly got to do better there, because that comes every, every time. And I'm going more than my pre, but I think North Amherst Flat Hills Road is like an accident waiting to happen with regard to the reliance on private wells and septic there with such small lots, you know, within a bedrock terrain up there. That's not, you know, that's going to come back at some point. And so, you know, that's not to be ignored. Very difficult problem.
Hold on, Jack, Chris, like Pam, can you slide back to the 2019 one? Because this is Michael's, which is good, but it, okay, all right. So where is that hydrology? Oh, all right, it was in the medium under zoning and bylaw.
Yeah. And
You know, can I, can, that's a good point. Can I ask Chris Bestra, is that something, do you think that would be handled in the recodification? Or does that need to be a separate thing?
I think it can be discussed in the recodification. It's something that probably requires some analysis of a consultant as to what those lots can actually accommodate. Right now, the zoning, I think, is 30,000 square feet per lot. It's probably better if it's, you know, more than that. But the next step up in our zoning bylaw is 80,000 square feet, which seems kind of beyond what should be required. So it's, it's got to have some technical analysis to figure this out. But that's certainly something that, that I think is important, and there is going to be more development up in that area. So you might as well face it and do something about it.
Jack, it just made me, you know, think about this. So Chris, would that be an in-house thing or hire a consultant thing or have to go apply for a grant and get money to do that kind of thing?
That would probably be hire a consultant. And currently, we don't have enough money to do that right now. We have, we only have $40,000 to work on downtown and gateway rezoning. So that's, you know, the downtown and the area immediately north of downtown or northwest of downtown. We don't really have anything in the budget to do other types of zoning analysis. So that's something that we would have to ask town council for as part of the capital budget. And, you know, I'm not sure if that's going to happen this year or if that's going to happen. It's probably not going to happen this year because of our financial stresses. So, you know, there may be some things that we can, some suggestions that we can make for that area. But really, to get serious about it, I think we do need to hire someone who knows about geology and how septic systems work, et cetera. So that may take a little bit longer than some of the other things which we can handle without hiring a consultant.
But Jack, just back to you. So in your professional opinion, because you really, you do feel that, what did, I forget what you said, not a ticking bomb, but.
Accident waiting to happen.
Accident waiting to happen, which is kind of funny. It's about sewer. So yeah, septic. Okay, yeah, accident, yeah, it's like that. All right.
Watering of the area because of the density, you know, with private wells on small lots like that, you know. All right, just watering of the area because of the density, you know, with private wells on small lots like that, you know. So, you know.
So it's important to be on the list, but not necessarily.
Yeah, it's not the top three.
Okay.
And then, you know, I would like my, you know, and I don't understand it, but I like my, you know, make my pitch for the form-based code, whatever that is. It sounds great. I just, so much of the, the code we're looking at is just seems so arbitrary. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Janet, and then I see Maria's hand.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. So I'm kind of, kind of lost in process. And so I know that we've agreed to work with Rob Mora, who's working on a rewrite of the zoning bylaw. And he was talking about working very closely with the zoning subcommittee and the planning board for direction. And then, you know, hiring consultants for issues downtown, parking and different, you know, probably form-based zoning issues, I would guess. And we have the master plan, which has an implementation matrix, has a lot of zoning changes on it. We have the housing production plan, which has a ton of recommendations for zoning and changes. The Amherst Housing Market Study, same thing. And the open space and recreation plan, which I think is still a draft, but also has recommendations in terms of action items needed to protect and buffer, you know, farmlands and recreational lands and and open space. And so I'm kind of completely lost about how like the town council, I just don't understand what we're doing tonight because I feel like we have a lot of plans, we have a lot of recommendations. The zoning subcommittee had a last year was working on multi-use buildings. We were starting to talk about affordable housing. zoning requirement across the town, which is part of the recommendations of those two housing things. So I just don't understand how like the town, like what are they coming to us for? Like taking, you know, 75 recommendations and what's our top five? And are they going to be doing zoning changes with Rob Mora and the planning board and the zoning? Are they just going to propose, you know, I mean, like, how do we coordinate all this? And, you know, and how will we work with neighborhoods and business people and the public in terms of getting support for these changes and so they can understand and have input in the process? So I'm just kind of lost here about what we're doing. I mean, I could give you my, you know, my top hit is inclusionary zoning across the board, every neighborhood, every project, special permit, site plan review, 10 or more residential units, any which way, any permit. Let's just get that job done. It's very, you know, and but I, but you know, and the housing is the behemoth of our town because we're basically a residence, a residential community for, you know, UMass and others. So I don't, I don't get it. Like, do you know what I'm saying? I just don't get it. I mean, if we're going to do form-based zoning and say to the town council, why don't you do some form-based zoning? That's a massive project. And how do they work with Rob Mora and us on getting there? I mean, do they have, are they, I mean, what do they want from us kind of thing? And how, how can we work together? Am I?
I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, but what they're looking for is a short list of what we as the planning board and semi-professionals would recommend for them to start tackling for the next year and a half. Now, that doesn't mean they're, they're going to listen to us. They could completely pick a different list or or the planning department could have a slightly different list. But it's giving them a starting point because CRC will be their guiding group to get the town council to decide what they think they will first pursue over the next year and a half. And then they will tell us that and we will assist them and work with them and the planning department to get those things done. So this is our moment to speak, to say what we feel is important and realistically trying to give them a short list of what we think they should do. So for top three, as I said, everyone should bring their top three. I heard you say inclusionary zoning. And I heard you say, you know, the housing stock increasing that. Do you have any other top things that you would like them to work on? Or is that it?
I think I, you know, I do have more ideas, but I wonder if we need to, so is town council going to be working with Rob Mora or on a separate line? Or, I mean, I see this, I need, I mentioned this before, I think we need someone on the planning board, the zoning subcommittee, working as liaison to CRC, kind of open those lines of communications. I just, you know, I could look at this list or the 75 recommendations and give you my top 10 or five. But are, tonight, are we going to come up with a top three to give to the town council regardless of what Rob Moore is working on?
Or Rob Moore is working on the recodification, which is its own separate thing that is based on him working with the bylaws inconsistencies, adjusting the framework so it's easier to read and understand. It hasn't been reworked in decades and aligning with current building codes. Like, that's his thing. That's his specialty. That's what he'll be working on. And then he will be presenting it in parts, I'm sure, to planning board, CRC and town council. Then there's the other part we're talking about, like inclusionary zoning, that would be more under the planning department and Chris. And she would either be working on drafting bylaw or if there's more resources needing, needed like a consultant, well, town council has the power to get the funds to get whatever they need to get it done. We don't. So and list wise, I said for everyone to bring their top three because I figured by the time we finish compiling this, it will be more like seven to 10. But like I said, we don't want to send everybody's top 10. We'll end up with like this chart, like 70 things. And then that's not really helpful to them. They are looking for what are they going to work on for the next year and a half? I think one of those things is the recodification. But what other things can we put on the list? As heavy suggestions, as they look to us as experts, is a recommendation for them to start figuring out that process. And we still do our role and have our public meetings and interact with the public, you know, as these bylaws roll out. It's just different than it used to be with town meeting and the zoning subcommittee and that kind of thing that doesn't really work anymore.
So, so when you talked to us, he was talking about, you know, the issues of the downtown requiring a consultant and direction from the planning board. And it wasn't just like I'm doing the recodification, but like more substantive issues and things like that. So I thought it was like a deeper process than what you're describing now, based on what he was saying. So.
I think he was just giving us a basic, what he kind of thought. Nothing was written in stone. And a lot of what he was talking about isn't, isn't really his jurisdiction. It would be Chris Bestra's.
I guess I just, I just got a completely, we talked for an hour, we had a long discussion about the whole redoing of the bylaw. And it wasn't just moving sections around. Anyway, I'm just lost on the process and how to kind of work together. And I wonder if we need a liaison to the CRC to kind of open up the discussion and things like that. So I will be quiet for a while.
It's the other way. CRC has a liaison to us.
They don't have anybody now.
They plan to.
So.
And that's how it was before, but the players have changed on CRC, but they'll have a new rep that will be the liaison with us.
I wonder if planning board members feel like we should have somebody too. So that said, I would put village centers. I think we've kind of neglected them and that's a big priority and a source of economic development for the town. Like keeping, you know, bringing in more, more housing to them in a way that people want to go to them and can actually walk from this to business with. So I think that village center planning is really important. And there's been a lot of focus on the downtown. I think that that would be a very long process. You know, questions about building heights, density. The BL, I don't know if it's broken or we can just redo the BL or make it into business village center for more flexibility. You know, part of the brokenness of the BL is just it's broken up into small, you know, property ownership, but there are owners are combining and they have more flexibility. There's also some really nice buildings in the BL. I would jump on the parking issue. It just seems completely, I don't know what we're doing on parking. And I think it really affects, I think there shouldn't be a no parking district downtown because everybody in those buildings and apartments need parking. You know, the mixed use building standards, I think tie in very closely to the apartment complexes. I would push for greater density at where we already have it, which is, you know, apartment complexes. And like, see if we can get better design and more amenities for people and also increase the density of it. I, the 40R is not my favorite because I just don't, I think that whole, I think, I just think we need to involve the neighbors and businesses in the processes before we kind of pop on a big form-based zoning. And then, you know, we, a lot of the master plan talks about sort of protecting open space and recreational areas and buffer zones for farmlands. And so I think we should look at those other sides, not just always, you know, increasing density and housing. So if we develop our village centers, we also need to protect our open lands and our farmlands and recreational lands. So I would look at those two as kind of a balanced type of thing. And then inclusionary affordable housing, we just have to do it across, across developments.
Thank you. I see Maria, then Doug, then Jack.
Someone said something that triggered, it might have been Jack who mentioned form-based code. And the reason why you guys picked up on this, there's a lot of repetition in this chart from last year is that every time under each column, there was a strategy or solution that could help that column, we put it there. And so that's why form-based code shows up, I think, in all of them. And it's something that would just solve so much, but it's a huge undertaking. It would take way too much money that we don't have right now. But that's just something to put in the back of their minds, the town council's minds, that, you know, one day when we do have the funds for it, that would resolve so much of the issues happening downtown, so many of the con, yeah, the conflicts that are going on, the really controversial issues, form-based zoning, form-based zoning is like the solution to all our prayers. I, it really is. It's just we can't, you know, handle some, a task that monumental right now. The other thing that Janet was talking about that, I don't know if we should get into this right now, Christine or not, but about the process and the zoning subcommittee in particular, because right now, I'm hearing a lot of feedback that town council, Rob Mora, the planning staff, they're all sort of figuring out this process about zoning, fixing, zoning rewrite, zoning issues, zoning amendments. And in my mind, as zoning subcommittee chair, I don't think that at this point, the zoning subcommittee needs to exist. There are too many cooks in the kitchen that actually make the decisions and no zoning better than the zoning subcommittee. I'm speaking for myself.
I'm with you.
So I really, I mean, we can talk about it when we do the subcommittee update, but it's kind of tied into this. We're trying to step out of the process as individuals and work more with like the bigger entities that are the decision makers. And have them work with the planning board because there's really great people on the planning board who all have really great ideas and experience. We should work more with them rather than creating yet another small subcommittee that's throwing around ideas that has no say-so in anything. And not only that, it's, it's a huge load on the planning staff as far as getting ready for yet another committee meeting that happens twice a month. So I just want to throw that in there, that the reason, another reason why we're giving all this feedback to town councils because they're decision makers, they're the ones who are going to lead this charge and priorities as far as how we, you know, make Amherst a better place to live, work, you know, be. And so yeah, I think they, they want feedback from the planning board because we've been doing this for a little while and we have come across the same sort of issues and they just want to hear from us, you know, what are the planning priorities that are in our mind. And so, yeah, I think we're hearing a lot about housing downtown. And then the whole zoning rewrite or bylaw repair, whatever, I think that's a separate trajectory. We don't know what's going on with that yet. But that might actually fix a lot of the issues we're talking about right now. But the bigger bites, I think, are downtown and housing as far as if town council wanted to think about other things to try to prioritize focusing on because zoning, the zoning bylaw issue is, I think that's another animal in itself. So so I just want to throw that out there, Janet, because you had mentioned the zoning subcommittee. And I think it needs to dissolve. I dug up this email from Wayne Fiden from last year because we had talked to Carolyn Mish. And I know that Chris had talked to or emailed with Wayne Fiden about like, what do you guys do as far as zoning? How do you make zoning changes? And Northampton does not have a zoning subcommittee. They start zoning changes from the planning staff. It goes to refer to the, the planning board and then the planning board talks or works with the city council, which then refers it back to the planning staff. So they really have a smaller circle as far as their process and how all this happens. So so I just want to throw that in there, even though we're going to maybe talk about it later. But yeah, I think the planning boards have a bigger sort of, you know, involvement in, in, in thinking about zoning bylaw and zoning bylaw amendments and that the zoning subcommittee is a thing of the past. It's, it was good when it was around because it, you know, started this sort of back when, I think a few members wanted, who actually wrote zoning bylaws. But I think we're not at that capacity now. And yeah, there's too many cooks in the kitchen. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you. I recognize Jack, then I see Michael, Doug and Janet. And just to remind everyone, we've got a lot of good stuff here. So add some more comments. My plan is that Chris can develop you know, draft of our list and then it will be reviewed at the next planning board meeting on the 19th, which then hopefully there would be a vote and it could then be moved forward to the planning department, CRC and the town council. So we've got a lot of good stuff here. So Jack.
Yeah. So, you know, I definitely agree with Marie about the zoning subcommittee. It seemed like its function was kind of interfacing with town meeting and, and the education process with how to deliver complex information to many people of varying levels of, of you know, technical sort of know-how and how to process. And that's not the case now, I don't think with, with the, with the CRC and town council, they just, it's just, it's a lot more, you know, efficiency that they're working with the town much better. And that all makes sense to me. So just wanted to say that. And then with regard to the, you know, functions of liaisons from the planning board, I go back to, I feel like we're, we're not elected people, we're just appointed. And then, and, and then when we send people to these different, you know, committees, like I'm on the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I mean, I, I'm very reluctant to make, you know, decisions that really have a bearing on, on Amherst, but really that really never really comes up in my, in my role there. It did come up when we were electing the, the new director for the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And all of a sudden, there was a lot of attention to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission in terms of who I was going to vote for. And, and all this intense is like, wow, people, so I, I realize like the planning board people, when, when we're representing on different committees or we're a liaison, that we represent the whole planning board. And, and so I get nervous when we have one individual that would be that liaison communicating for all of us. So I just, I'd rather have the CRC come to us like, like Christine mentioned, seems like a much more healthy model. Because again, I, I feel like we're more in an advisory role. And the last, I don't want to pick on anyone, but I think I heard everybody needs parking downtown. Not true. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I see Michael Burtwhistle.
Yeah. In line with Christine's hope for a top three or a top five, I would, I want to suggest that we've got a top three. And that is housing and it's multiple, in its multiple incarnations with the toolbox idea, downtown and the ultimate repair and replacement of the zoning bylaw. And if we submit those three ideas to CRC and then to the council, I think that will include almost, most, the most. I think that will include almost most, the most of the things that we're interested in working on. It doesn't leave every, doesn't put everything in. It leaves the, the Flat Hills issue and the water issue out. It leaves the marijuana cultivation, cultivation out. It leaves several things out that were on the list. But I think for me, those are the, those are the really important things. And all the stuff we talk about on a regular basis, whether it's form-based zoning or zoning repair or fixing the parkings bylaw or any of those kind of bylaw tinkerings or cha- or big changes, you know, you put it under the, under the category of bylaw revision and/or of, uh, uh, J, uh, redoing. And the same thing is true with the downtown issues and the same thing is true with the housing issues. Well, they all overlap to some degree. Uh, and that's why that all those, uh, items showed up in all the different categories in the 19, in the 2019 chart. Because they do, they all overlap and they both fit into one place or another. But if we focus them the way I'm suggesting, I think it makes more sense, it's more understandable to the CRC and to the Town Council. But these are the things that the, the planning board is interested in working on and, uh, uh, we hope they are too.
Agree. Sounds good, Michael. Um, so at this point, um, Chris, uh, can you and I sort of work together and get a draft out? And send that out to members? So, and then put it on the agenda for the next meeting to finalize?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. Um, you know, this is sort of our creative process here and it's fluid and, and, um, I think we'll do a good job and get a good list and I think it will be helpful. So thank you, everyone, for, um, you're looking at this. So, um, at this point, I'm gonna suggest we move forward. Chris, were there any other old business topics not reasonably anticipated?
I can't think of.
I just saw, you can't think of any? Okay. Um, Michael, I'll, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I don't know whether this is old business or new business. In any event, it's not, not anticipated 48 hours. Meeting. Uh, I was driving today by the, uh, up Spring Street and I noticed the, uh, building at, uh, 26, is it 26 Spring Street? And I realized that it's been, uh, sitting there with nothing having been done to it for at least four months now. Um, and, uh, I wonder if that's an issue for us or for anybody that, that, I, I wonder, I'm wondering about it. Uh, did they, other, other buildings are complete, are continuing in spite of the pandemic. Uh, that one is not. I guess it's the pandemic. I, I, have they run out of money? Are we going to have to repurpose that site? What's going on?
Chris?
I do not know what's going on. I've heard conjectures from various people, but I don't have any facts. So I don't, I can't really, I can't really help to enlighten us about that one. I've noticed that myself, Michael. So.
It's, it's somewhat concerning that that building might just stay that way for 15 years unless we do something about it. That really strikes me as a bad idea. Anyway, just brought it up.
Thanks. Uh, item five, new business topics, not reasonably anticipated, anything?
Uh, we don't have any new business as far as I know. Maybe Pam has something, but not, I do not.
And Janet, did you have something to say? I saw her hand pop up, but now it's gone. But we'll just raise it again if you have something. Um, okay. So, and I don't see Pam. Pam's working there. Uh, I numbers.
No, I have nothing.
Okay. Um, item six, Form A, A and R subdivision applications?
We do have a Form A. Yep. We can show you where it is. She's got a, a map here. Um, this is.
There you go, Chris. Here's your map.
Tom Reedy has submitted this, um, A and R application. And so the, uh, property that's outlined here in yellow is 10 Cortland Drive. And the gentleman who owns this property also owns the adjacent property, which is outlined in turquoise. And he wants to, um, reconfigure these properties so that he, um, I think he probably wants to sell the turquoise property. So he submitted an A and R plan, which Pam might, um, now show us. And, um, so lot one is the lot on the left where the house is currently located. I might add that this, um, property, uh, on top of the drawing here that looks like it's got bricks on it, um, that is also a property that's owned by this fellow. I think, I'm not sure what his name is, Schnee's, He Weiss or something like that. Um, anyway, so he owns this, uh, property with the house on it. He owns the property with the brick pattern on it and he owns this property, um, to the right side of the drawing, which is called lot two. Um, he wants to reconfigure the property line between lots one and two. And so he can accommodate the building circle on both properties and also meet the setback requirements. Because you can see that there's a dotted line that runs very close to his house. Uh, maybe Pam can show where that is. This line here, yep, it's existing lot line. And that's too close to the house. And it also puts this little shed, this little square striped thing between the two properties. If you go up to the top, that, that thing there, it puts that, I think that's actually called the cabin. Um, so that would have been on lot two. And Mr. Schnee Weiss wants to have that little cabin on his own property where the house is and also have the appropriate setbacks, um, to that cabin. And the cabin does have the appropriate setbacks in this drawing. And the deck also has the appropriate setback. The deck is, um, I think it's four feet high. And so it's set back a distance, no, it's three feet high. So it's set back a distance equal to its height. So Rob Mora has examined this drawing closely and it meets the zoning requirements. And, um, town engineer has also examined this closely and he recommended that there be an easement, which is, um, the kind of hatched area that's shown down closer to the road, that area there, which would be a sewer easement that would allow the sewer in Cortland Drive to serve both lot two and lot one. So that's, that's why that sewer easement is drawn there. So Mr. Reedy would have been here except that he needed to be in Uxbridge at a zoning board of appeals meeting, um, tonight. So he wasn't able to be here, but he did, uh, ask that we present this drawing to you, this A and R, and ask if you would authorize the, um, planning board chair to sign it.
Good. Does, uh, anyone have an issue with me signing? Raise your hand. If there's any questions. I'm not seeing any hands, so I think, um, I think we're good, Chris.
Okay. So I'll get the drawings together and I'll let you know when, um, when they're all together. And, uh, ask you to come in and sign them, Christine.
Great. Thank you. Uh, item seven, upcoming ZBA applications.
I don't have anything new to tell you. Um, they're still, still, um, taking on the comprehensive permit for 132 Northampton Road. Um, and they will be meeting again tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you.
Something that just came in, Pam, last week that we put into Munis. What was that? You helped Maureen to put it into Munis. Remember what that was?
Yes, that, that's the appeal for.
That's right. Yep. So that's, that's the appeal. Right. Okay.
But I thought everybody knew about that.
Yes, right.
So item, um, eight, upcoming SPPSPR SUVs of applications.
The one thing that I'm aware of is that, um, Survival Center is coming in. Uh, they, um, are trying to serve their population, um, and not allowing anyone to come into their building. And right now they have a tent in their parking lot. And, um, because, you know, winter is coming on, uh, they want to have a more, um, secure building or temporary building that is capable of withstanding snow. And also, um, you know, it's a little warmer than just having a tent. So, uh, because the workers from the Survival Center have to be in this building and serve the people who come for food or whatever they're coming for. Um, so anyway, they want to propose a, a structure that they're describing as a, a temporary structure. And they're, sometimes they talk about it as being a shed. So they're going to be coming to you on the second of September, um, to make this proposal. And I've been working with the, um, with Lev and Ezra on the application for that. Um, so you'll be seeing that. And, and Pam, I don't, can't think of anything else that we have coming before the planning board. Can you?
No.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll move to item nine, planning board, uh, committee and liaison reports. Um, so Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Jack?
Uh, I, I believe there's, you know, a quote-unquote recess, uh, going on right now. Not sure when we're meeting next, but, um, it's been quiet.
Are they, they're gonna do Zoom meetings or?
Oh, we've been doing Zoom meetings, but, um, you know, that was, uh, geez. I can't remember when the last one was. Definitely in June. I'm not sure we did one in July.
So it's summer, summer.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Probably gets started up September time.
Um, Community Preservation Act Committee?
Uh, nothing to report there or for the design review board.
Um, so before we move on to zoning subcommittee, I just, um, I just, Jack, do you know how many years you've been on Pioneer Valley Planning Commission?
Uh, see, when did I start? Like four years ago?
Four years ago.
Yeah.
So four years, I'm just, and, um, and you have now moved up to the level that you're also on their executive committee.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And with, um, my moving on, that will open up a slot for someone else on the planning board to be the alternate commissioner, if they would like to, to keep that in mind. Um, the agricultural commission, David was on, that is also open. And, um, Michael, how many years have you been on the, uh, CPAC and the design review board?
Been on the design review board for three years and CPAC for two.
For two, okay. So I'm just asking because, um, you know, in the past, um, usually members rotate a little bit, try different committees and I want the other members and there'll be new members coming on, um, to fill those spots. But where you guys are the existing members, if, if, you know, this is a good time to sort of reconsider or move, um, like, um, with the, uh, if the zoning subcommittee goes away, um, you know, Michael, like you have two big ones there. You may not want both, um, and other members might want to cha- you know, those are two of the pretty powerful ones. Um, and so just keep in mind that other committee members might, you know, want to shuffle a little on one of those. So think about which one you like the most or something.
I'll not give up either of both of them.
Well.
But he wants them.
Well, and that's the point, I think. So, um, we'll have over the, about a month now. Hopefully you'll be getting some, a couple of new members. Um, elections would happen, you know, the board votes. Um, so just, I'll give it a little thought, um, you know, and if other members do want that, um, they might speak up. But Michael, I guess what I'm saying is maybe if you have a preference for one, um, that you might want to make that known so that people know that, like, that one you like more than the other one or whatever. Or, or maybe you like them both the same. Um, just tossing that out because, you know, just to rotate it around. Um, so, um, I'll move on to zoning subcommittee and, um.
Christine?
Yes.
Doug Marshall.
Doug, sorry. Thank you. Didn't see your hand. Thank you. Doug?
Yeah, I, I, I wanted to know, all of you guys that are liaisons, uh, what does that involve? Do you go to every meeting of that entity or do you call the chair once every two months? Or, you know, what, what's the level of commitment involved?
The level of commitment is you are expected to attend the meetings of those, um, boards or commissions or committees. That is the expectation. So it is an added, um, uh, duty to your normal planning board. Um, so it is a commit, you know, a commitment. And some people just don't have the bandwidth and that's okay. They're not on any of the committees. Um, but, um, you know, we used to have some additional ones on there, but the, the list is shrinking, which is kind of good because there's already so many demands on it. So, um, so like I said, when you have new members coming in, this is when you might all want to look at this with the chair.
Christine, in response to Doug's comment, uh, in terms of the design review board and the Community Preservation Act Committee, uh, we're not liaisons, we're members of those committees. Uh, not that it makes any real difference, but they're voting members.
Well, it makes a huge difference. Uh, CPAC also is a voting member. So the only, and.
Correct.
Cultural commit, I don't, Chris, do you know if on the ag committee, uh, commission, do you vote as a member or are you just, um?
I think it's a liaison.
So that one's a liaison and the other ones are members. The design review board, the CPAC and, um, the Pioneer Valley. Vote. Uh, Janet? Janet?
She's muted.
But, um, he's also frozen. You're frozen, Janet. And muted.
Okay, I'm going to, all right, can you unmute me then, somebody?
Um, yeah, I can.
I've been trying to.
Yeah, you're frozen. Um.
But it's in, but it's interesting. I was just able to clear.
I think she might be good now.
Yep.
Yeah, your wifi is just, are you in a basement or something? No, because it's, like, wherever you are usually, no problem. But tonight, a lot of, a lot of issues. Janet, you're, yeah, you're just fro- you're gonna have to go bye-bye and try, um, logging in again. Okay, I'm gonna assume that she's gonna close out and then log back in. Um, Maria, oh, no other hands. Maria, do you want to talk about zoning subcommittee?
Yeah, just briefly, but also maybe when we get new members, it'd be great if whoever's on current committees just talks about like number of meetings a month and commitment and what it's like. Because I have no idea what the other commitments are for the other fourths. Um, but yeah, as far as zoning subcommittee, I already mentioned, it's just a now defunct group. I mean, especially with you going, Christine, it'd just be Janet and I. And even if we had 10 people on the board, it just still doesn't make sense. Uh, sorry, the subcommittee, because, um, there's a, a lot of other heads sort of going, coming together to work on zoning rewrite. So, um, I don't know, do we have to vote to nullify or can we just dissolve it? I don't know if there's a formal process we need to do, but, um, yeah, I think the zoning subcommittee is, uh, no longer needed. Um, there are other towns that had it when they had big things going on like, uh, master planning or, uh, other big initiatives, but, um, now the ball's in someone else's court. So, um, yeah, Chris, do you know if we need to do some sort of formal thing to say zoning subcommittee is no longer a?
I think you should probably should to take a formal action.
Years ago, they took a vote to create it, so you would take a vote to end it. Um.
So can I make a motion to dissolve the zoning subcommittee?
Can I interrupt you? All, Janet McGowan has left the meeting.
Oh.
Just, just so you know, you know that. I mean, I have noted it here in the minutes.
No.
But I have no idea if she's trying to come back.
Okay.
Um.
So I suggest we don't make the motion until Janet comes back.
Yeah, she's a committee member, so yeah, it would make sense. But that's the general sense of the direction of that subcommittee. It's just, it's no longer useful.
I agree. And I just, as someone who's been on it.
Uh, I wonder if this, if she has called in. Can we ask this person who they are? I bet it's Janet because it's brand new.
It's me.
Bring her in.
I mean, I'm just listening. Just keep going, guys. I'm just gonna hang out here. Well, Janet, we were just saying that the zoning subcommittee is no longer really a useful entity because there's other bigger groups making decisions. And so we're talking about, uh, making a formal.
motion or vote to no longer have that subcommittee?
Do you know, I would actually strongly object to that because it's not on the agenda, and I'm in the vice chair of the committee, and I haven't heard about it, but it seems, you know, like it's been talked about by others. And I think maybe we should push this to September to sort of discuss because, yeah, I, people, I think people need to refresh a little bit of what Rob Mara was talking about in terms of his, who he was planning on working with. I was also gonna suggest that we all talk maybe in September as a planning board about how we're gonna implement the master plan and the master plan implementation committee we had been talking about months ago. So I, I don't think that, you know, at nine o'clock or 10 o'clock on a meeting during the, and at the end is kind of a, seems, just seems really out of order to me. I mean, I'm on this committee and, and I just, I could see a role for it, I'd like to talk about it and think about it and talk to the committee members, not hear that, like, oh, it's not important, let's get rid of it.
Well, the committee members would be you and me, and like I mentioned before, right now, there's too many things going on for the planning department to really put more energy and time into yet another bi-monthly meeting that isn't really going to be achieving much because.
Could we talk about this, could we talk about this one, it's on the agenda in a more kind of thoughtful way? And, you know, put it off for two weeks or a month or so, I mean, we're not gonna meet anyway, so.
No, we're not.
And maybe some, maybe, I mean, it might be some members on the board now or in the future be interested in, you know, revitalizing it. I certainly am.
I guess it's, it's, yeah, we can definitely discuss it later, it makes sense too, but I also wanna just have you, think in your thought process, think about the planning staff as well than their time. So, yeah, we can discuss it more, but also consider that as a reason to not have it. So, so give that some thought. I could put together a memo or a list of things to send to Chris Bestrop to then circulate as reasons why the zoning subcommittee is defunct, and then we can talk about it at a later meeting, but.
Sure, I just think it's sort of, it seems to be, I'm kind of completely surprised by this.
And. To say, Janet, I've mentioned it to you.
Well, you actually mentioned it to me on a phone call as a done deal, which makes me wonder if you have been talking with others about it, I don't understand this process.
It's not a done deal, but I did talk to you about it. I'm on the committee also, Michael, I do see it. I'm on the committee, Maria's on the committee, and I think all the reasons why Maria has mentioned that this is not a good use of our time, it's no longer, it doesn't fit.
Let's just follow for a moment, open meeting law.
Hold on, Janet, let me just finish, and I also agree that it's, I want Chris Bestrop to have time to write zoning bylaws, not be preparing for yet another meeting where nothing really gets accomplished. I want her to be writing the zoning bylaws and bringing them to the planning board. But I, I hear you, I, and that, you know, you don't want it to be dissolved, and you are a member, and I think we wanna hear reasons, you know, specific reasons why you think it needs to keep going. But before you do that, think about for a minute, I wanna call, Michael has been very patiently with a raised hand. I also see Chris Bestrop, so I'm gonna have Michael talk, then Chris, and then Janet, if you raise your hand, like, you can talk more.
Thank you. When Maria mentioned this notion of the zoning subcommittee being irrelevant an hour or so ago, when we were talking about the priorities, that's the idea that first came up there. One of the things that Maria, you mentioned was the idea of the possibility that perhaps the planning board should on a regular basis discuss these things. I would be certainly reason, I would be reasonable, it seems to me, and again, this is, I don't wanna get ahead of this. It would seem to be reasonable, if we're going to abolish the zoning subcommittee, that we put a an assumed hour in every planning board meeting to talk about zoning issues as, as one of, you know, as, as number seven, right after new business or something like that, I'm someplace in there, that that becomes a regular point. Now, maybe we'd, we'd just be responding to things that, that Chris would bring us. Maybe we would be talking about these priorities that we've been talking about for much of the evening. But we get so bogged down in, in reviews with one server or another, that we seldom have a chance to talk about the thing that I think the planning board is most appropriately the venue for, which is planning, zoning. So if we abolish the notion of the planning board having anything to do with zoning, and give it to the planning department, and give it to Mr. Mara, and give it to the CRC, then what are we doing here? We're supposed to be doing zoning, and if we don't do it through a subcommittee, we've gotta do it through the whole body, and I'm happy to do it through the whole body.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Chris Bestrop, and then I see Maria's hand.
So I just want to mention that Rob Mara and I are going to meet with the Community Resources Committee on September 15th, it's scheduled today. And we're gonna be talking about how we're planning to approach the rewrite of the zoning bylaw, and that will certainly bear on this discussion. He and I are gonna prepare a presentation. And, you know, I can keep you up to date on what we're doing at our next planning board meeting on the 19th. We haven't gotten a lot down on paper yet, but we're working on it. And so I think it'll be enlightening to talk about it on the 19th and to talk about it on the 15th of September, if you wanted to attend or listen in the CRC meeting, which I think it's gonna be at 2:00.
Thank you for, and Janet, I'll recognize you next, and then Maria, but Chris, that sounds good, could you say that date again for us?
September 15th, which I think is a Tuesday, is that right?
Probably a Tuesday.
So.
Great.
Meeting virtually with.
On Tuesdays.
Okay, and you will have a list of priorities from the planning board, and you'll have your own, and this is sort of a meeting of the minds, and that's good to hear. Thank you. Janet?
So, you know, this is something I've been thinking about for a while, which is, you know, especially since we're gonna have new members, is maybe talking, like having a day retreat or something like, you know, a morning, a few hours or an afternoon on a weekend to talk about how we wanna organize ourselves and focus on. You know, cuz everyone, you know, throughout the year, people will make suggestions, like Jack Jemsek was looking for, you know, like, how to, you know, in town, how do we get more land for, you know, research parks? Doug Marshall has that thing with the whole construction, you know, how, why we have to read that aloud. We can also, I think, talk about how we operate as a board, and maybe the zoning subcommittee, the master plan implementation committee, reorganizing our meetings a little more to focus on planning, because it just, it seems to be our weak point. And, you know, maybe even just the process of how we go through every two weekends and stuff. So it might be time for like a board retreat with some new members to kind of figure out how to move ahead, you know, working with the zoning updates and things like that. So that's just a suggestion I've been thinking about for a while, so, anyway, that's it.
Thank you. I just wanna remind everyone about the zoning subcommittee, that the planning board creates it, dissolves it, it can be recreated. So as things evolve over the next year or two, or, you know, and it could come back in a different capacity. And also that the MPIC will also hopefully be developed over the next year, and I think that will be more comprehensive than just planning board members, but there might be one or two planning board members who, so that might get added to our list of planning board committees and liaisons. So keep that in mind. Maria?
I just wanna say that I'd actually emailed Chris Bestrop June 4th about the zoning subcommittee's usefulness and whether we could, you know, of course, that was right, we were not meeting, and I, and I thought, is it even worth starting up meeting again? And then I said, is it even worth existing? And so we had a brief phone call, so I just wanna apologize to you, Janet, about like being in the dark about it. It was something that I had been thinking about for a while. Obviously, I didn't realize it was that long ago, and I just really thought with so many moving parts, so many cogs in the machine, all going to the same goal, it just didn't make sense to have the two of us. Because, Christine, you know, sitting around discussing who's zoning and housing, as much as I'd like to, it's something that wouldn't really result in anything, and it's a huge load on the planning department, I just keep, you know, emphasizing that as well. So we don't have to make a decision tonight, we're certainly not gonna be meeting for a while, so it's not urgent, but it's sort of the general direction that I think we're heading toward. And like Christine said, if it needs to come back, you can come back later, but anyways, yeah, I just dug up my email, it was from like June 4th. It was like, I just had this bug in my ear, like, you know, this doesn't seem like a thing we really need anymore, so. But yeah, Janet, I, I didn't think of it as something that you need to talk to everyone about at that time, so.
I guess if we had been meeting, it would have come up, but we don't meet.
I just, I just sort of talked to Chris Bestrop about it, and, you know, it was in my head. Yeah.
As it was mine too, and I've talked to Chris Bestrop about it, mostly because of staff resources and.
Yeah, at this time.
If anyone's noticed lately, I've been really, really fighting to try to get some stuff off Chris's plate and, and, you know, be able to have her focus on what we really want her to focus on for us, so. Chris, I would like to recommend that you put this on the next planning board meeting on the 19th. I think that gives everybody enough time to think about it and we're able to run up again then. So with that said, I think we're done with the committee and liaison reports. That was a lot, but we're kind of doing some housekeeping here that we haven't done in a long time and need to do. We're in a time of transition, so I'm gonna move to item 10, report a chair, which, a little sad to say, I wanna thank everybody for this past year has, it's been crazy. It was a really good learning experience for me. I really loved working with you all, I think we did an incredible amount of work, and we even have really mastered doing this through COVID online, pros and cons with both person and being here, but my term runs out at the end of this month. So with that, we need to get new leadership. I did talk to Jack, and we, I think we would both, if he'll accept, we, we would like to nominate Doug Marshall to replace me as chair, and we can open this up to discussion. First, he has to even say he'd entertain the idea. But I think he would be great, you've really hit the ground running, even though you're our youngest member.
Are we doing nominations now or deciding now?
Well, you have to have a chair, and I won't be here, so.
Okay.
I, I mean.
So, I mean, is this, is this normally an agenda item? I'm kind of lost.
No, sometimes, not always, cuz people leave. It's been done all different ways over the past five years that I've been on the board.
You could nominate Doug as a, as a chair until you have elections. I think what you're gonna do is wait until you have your new members to have an election. So Doug could be nominated as interim chair until you get new members for formal elections. The elections are usually put on an agenda, at least a formal agenda item.
Well, we can do it that way. Doug, would you accept, I, I've just asked, finishing the question, Michael, and that, would, would you accept a, to be interim chair, and then elections would be held when the new members are brought on in September?
Yeah, yeah, I'd be willing. Sure, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be out of town on the 19th.
Yeah, oh, so we would do it in.
So, you know, I, I hope to call in, I, I know I have wifi where I'll be, but I, I can't guarantee that I'll be available at the next meeting.
And we still have a vice chair for that, or we will.
Okay.
So, Michael?
Am I, yeah, I am. Are you saying that you're not gonna be the chair at the next meeting, at the next two meetings, that you're, you're leaving right now?
There's only one more meeting, and I'm not sure I can make the 19th.
Okay, we have a vice chair.
We, we do, but I'm pitching that I would like.
It seems to me totally out of, out of, out of order to appoint a new chair when we know that we're gonna have at least two more, two new members of the board, maybe three, coming on in September. And we have a perfectly fine functioning vice chair to operate until such, such time as we have a full board to elect a new chair.
So, we could, but what I just asked is if Doug would be interim chair.
I understand what you're saying. I don't mind, what I'm saying is we don't need an interim chair, we have a vice chair right now.
So we, we could, but my concern is we are in COVID, and the CRC has has not done this before, and if, it could be a while before, we could have new members in September, or it could take longer, so.
We have a, we have a meeting scheduled for interviews at the end, at the end of August.
Yes. But it's, we've been here before and it didn't happen, so I, I'm just remembering.
I, I don't think we've been here before and it didn't happen. I think the last time, the last time there were interviews, Doug was appointed almost immediately thereafter. That's, that's the most.
Now, this was supposed to happen by June 30th, and it didn't.
I know that, but there weren't any, there weren't any interviews scheduled, there was not a pool. There was not a pool that was deemed adequate, there is now.
Okay, 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 okay.
I'm not done, Christine. There are, there are interviews scheduled, and the CRC is immediately going to recommend to the council whoever they recommend. And those people will be seated, if not at the first meeting in September, certainly at the second meeting in September. And it seems to me inappropriate for us, six people, to determine who the chair is gonna be when at least two of us won't be there, maybe three of us won't be there.
Okay, so just to put in perspective, I've been a new member on a committee when they do elections, and it's, how, they don't necessarily know how to vote, because they don't know us, they don't know who has, wants it, who, who's good at what. And so often, I didn't even vote because I had no perspective on how to make such a decision, and I relinquished the decision to the veteran members who knew far better than I what would be best for moving forward as leadership.
That's clearly was your choice and a reasonable one, but other people coming onto the board may not have that point of view, they may think they know what they're doing, and they wanna vote for somebody, and maybe they'll be.
Let me remind you that elections are supposed to be done by June 30th every year. So by the time these people come on, we're already two months into that year, we're behind. So this should have been done back in June, but it wasn't because of various things. So what I'm saying is, they will be voting, but there's only 10 months left at that point, and then you're supposed to revote every year. So we're already.
This doesn't seem like a big set of problems to me. Why don't we just talk about this, you know, one thing, maybe we should reschedule the August 13th meeting.
Here's my thing, if this is my last meeting, I'm just looking at this, is, we can't push everything, what is with this, like, next meeting, more talk? Like, look, this is, I proposed an interim chair because I'm stepping down. We can vote on it, if I hear a motion from someone, there's some raised hands, we can vote on it, and if there's, if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass, so I'm just pitching.
I, I just, I feel like the, it feels like the end of this meeting is like a giant open meeting law violation, why, I mean, why wasn't this on the agenda? Why didn't we know about this weeks, you know? I don't understand, what's going on?
The planning board rules and regulations, it very clearly says we're supposed to do this every year by the end of the fiscal, the end of June 30th. It's what we're supposed to do, there's nothing in the rules.
So, so this problem has been known about for months, and now we're talking about it at 10 o'clock at night at the end of a meeting with no notice.
Because things are never.
And talk about it. Like, yeah, the vice chair can do the next meeting.
You knew I was leaving, so this is.
I have no idea you weren't gonna be here next week.
If I wasn't gonna be, it doesn't matter, I'd still be doing this, even if I had one more meeting left. This is the end, I'm leaving, we all knew I was leaving, so we should have all been thinking about who should replace me. And, you know, Jack is. And you know, Jack is the norm that you default to, but he has a very heavy workload, so he's, doesn't want to, so. He'd rather stay as vice chair, which is fine, and so my thinking after a lot of thought, I just, I wanted to put out there as we're allowed to do, I'm just pitching that forget interim, I mean, I, I asked if Doug Marshall would wanna be chair. So normally, I know Janet, you're only been on the board for a year, but when this happened last year, then we talk about it and you know, other people can volunteer too and we can have multiple votes, but this is what happens every year. I'm on my fifth year. This happens every year.
Well, why don't we appoint Michael because he's been there for four years and knows how to run a planning board meeting and can cover for a few weeks or a month. I, it just seems very, I just, I don't know why we're talking about this without, you know, just, but I just, let's take somebody who's been around for a while. Gone to maybe too many planning board meetings and just have him run the show for a month or so, you know, next month. And we'll notice the vote and will, people will know it is and will think about it and it seems very on the fly.
Well. I've given my recommendation. I'm gonna call on some other hands. Janet, I know you can't raise a hand, but like, we're not trying to have a dialogue with you. You have to either say I'd like to speak and then I'll put you in the queue.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Um, and, you know. Okay, Maria?
Um, so I, I'm, I forget what the name of my term is, secretary? I don't know what I am, but anyways. I don't have the capacity both mentally and time-wise to be chair and I fully support Doug. Doug is a planner and architect and knows this stuff. Um, he's the newest member, but he knows what we're talking about very fully and I just, I, I, the fact that he was willing to even take it, um, you know, to step up, I really appreciate it and I think that um, you know, there might be other people who want to do it or, or have time to. I, I certainly can't. Um, I don't know, Jack, what your situation is, but um, yeah, it's just, I think Jack was, I don't know all the proper terms, but number two, and then I was number three, and so that's just the way the, the things sort of run around. And um, yeah, I don't know if, Chris, you know, like, what the protocol is if, if both the second and third in chain can't really um, step up, you know, what you, what your official steps should have been, but um, I fully support Doug, so.
Jack?
Yeah, it looks like we lost Janet.
She's still listed over here in attendees. That's what I just went looking for. Janet, can, are you there?
I can hear you, but I can't see me, which, you know, met me just fine.
That's, uh, because you're on a telephone now, right?
No, I hung, I hung up, I, I, I moved my, my um, computer and I'm in a different room now.
Oh, okay.
I see your name. You just haven't turned on your screen.
Yeah, we'll figure that out, but anyway.
Oh, okay, Jack, I believe you were.
Yeah, so I just wanna say, I mean, obviously Christine and I have talked, not violating open meeting law. Probably, you know, six months ago, a while, and I, you know, and you grind along i- i- you know, in life and uh, where I'm at right now is, you know, I have a new job, started that in February. It's, it's great. But I'm uh, and I also have some other commitments, some which I'm pulling out of. And then this Pioneer Valley Planning Commission thing I wanna take very seriously. That meets, you know, monthly in addition to the, you know, quarterly meetings for the commissioners. And so that weighed on my mind and then also like, man, you know, Christine has done just an amazing job as the chair. It's like, I was like, holy cow, how can I, you know, and so I, I have all these expectations of myself of like, if I was to be chair and, and do it, you know, to the best of my ability and, and, and so, and that's, that's where I was uh cautionary and I, you know, and Christine had that information, you know, and Marie has already, you know, said her case and, and uh, and I, I just had to say that um, you know, no disrespect to, to Mike, we, you know, but uh, Doug has, he, he, he's been pretty um, for me, uh, impressive in terms of, I, I don't know that, for me, I was like, on the board for like a year. Uh, it's like, you know, what's all this about? And I think the first meeting, uh, Doug was like, he didn't skip a beat and so I was just very impressed by him and then he's a planner. And, and uh, Christine said that he was interested, so I, I support, you know, Doug, if uh, he can do it, whether it's interim, whatever, I, but I, I have, we're, we would be in good hands with, with Doug, uh, I have no doubt. Uh, and that's, you know, that's how I have looked at it. I have really been struggling. I've, I've been struggling with this because I knew Christine was leaving. I'm the vice chair. I know I could do it, but I, I wanna do it really well. And um, you know, I just question that, that, you know, now's the right time in my life to take, to take that on and um, and you know, again, I, I, I apologize to, to, you know, oh Janet, you get, you're, you're back on video. But, but anyway, it was, it's been all on me and I, maybe this, you know, I don't know how you get dialogue on something like this, but it's just, um, it was personal to me. But Christine had a, you know, uh, a suggestion of Doug and I think it, it, you know, it's a good one. It's a good one, so. And that's, you know, that's where I'm at, you know, on this, but I understand Mike and Janet. This is, it's ten o'clock and it's tough, but I don't want Christine to leave. I mean, that's my choice right there, so what do you do?
Well, I would like, I would feel better leaving with at least an interim chair. Um, I think it shows leadership and camaraderie amongst ourselves. I think Doug is, we're so lucky to have him. Um, he's really proved his worth um, in the eight months or that we've had him. Um. You, you know, I, I would like to, um, I see Chris's hand. Um, Chris?
Well, I just wanted to talk about the way this is traditionally done. So traditionally, the um, people get appointed, I mean, ideally to the planning board in June. Um, they get appointed in June and they take office at the beginning of July. Traditionally, we wait until people are appointed and as I said, it's an ideal scenario because often you don't actually get appointments until September. But in my experience, um, the, the, the elections are usually put on the agenda as an, as, as an item and they're usually um, put on the agenda after the new members um, take office. So my recommendation, as I said before, would be to put it on the agenda for one of the September meetings after at your new members and um, hold formal elections at that time. And to elect an interim chair at this time to carry you through until you have your formal elections. And you would have to do that anyway. If you got to a meeting, say you got to the meeting on the nineteenth of August and nobody, uh, and neither Maria nor Jack wanted to chair, you would have to elect a, a chairperson for that particular meeting. So one way or another, you're gonna have an interim chair until you have your elections. So this seems like a reasonable thing to do, to elect an interim chair tonight.
That's what I would like to do. Um, Janet, I see your hand and then Michael, I think you're raising your hand.
So I don't wanna be um, anti-Doug in any way cuz I think he's been a great add to the planning board also. I don't think we can vote on something, this is a violation of open meeting law, to be voting on an interim chair or any kind of vote without notice. This is obviously could be seen under, you know, it could have been, it's not something that came up suddenly. I assumed Christine was gonna be our chair until the end of August. If we show up at the next planning board meeting and nobody wants to be chair, the vice chair doesn't wanna be chair, the secretary wouldn't be chair, let's appoint that person then. I, I'm not comfortable voting, I'm not voting against Doug in any way. Um, but I just not comfortable voting without an item that's never on the agenda that was, you know, beyond, I hate to use the legal term foreseeable, but it's, I don't know how we got here and I'm, I'm not gonna be voting on anybody or anything. So I think that's an open meeting law violation.
Michael?
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't uh, not focused on the question whether it's an open meeting law violation. I, I don't know about that. Uh, but that's not, that's not what I'm interested in. Uh, it, it's, the responsibility of the vice chair is to serve in the absence of the chair. If Christine Gray-Mullen is not gonna be here on August nineteenth, it's Jack's duty, if you will, to chair the meeting. Uh, we don't need an interim chair. That's what the, that's what the vice chair is for. Now, Jack agreed to be vice chair.
Fills in for the chair.
I'm not finished, Christine. Just think, Jack, you agreed to be vice chair a year ago or whenever it was. Um, it seems to me that uh, you should continue to be vice chair and serve as chair in the absence of the chair uh, as, as, as long as you're a member of the board. I just don't think we need to have this kind of uh, uh, decision being made at this point. We don't need a vice, we don't need an interim chair. We have a vice chair, so.
That, no, you'll have no chair, so what a vice chair does is it fills in for the chair, but there won't be any chair. You're supposed to have a chair.
That's a, that's a, that's a.
Here's my thing, we're voting on an interim chair. I, I don't see the problem with that.
Well, the problem with that, with all due respect to Doug, is the interim chair is then the de facto chair when it comes time to electing a permanent chair.
So is it that you wanna be chair, Michael?
No, I don't wanna be chair. It's the last thing I wanna do because my, my only real function in this body is to be a, a, a goad. I'm not the chair. I, that's not my function. That's not my role. I don't wanna be chair.
Okay, Janet, do you wanna be chair? I'm sorry, you're muted.
I, I don't, I, I, I feel like we've gone from talking about getting rid of the zoning subcommittee to voting on a interim chair and, you know, I don't see.
I'm talking about chair, chair, full chair.
Do I wanna be chair? I, I'd like to think about it more than twenty seconds. I, I, I don't know, is this normal process? Is this, why can't we just wait till?
I'm just tossing it out that if Jack's not up for being chair and neither is Maria and I'm gone and Michael doesn't wanna be chair, Doug has said he's willing to be chair. There's only you, like, so there's only two options, so I don't understand what it makes a difference if it's September or if it's now. There's one or maybe two people who would wanna be chair.
Uh, I'm an attorney. There's an open meeting law.
There's no open meeting law with this, Janet. You don't have to publish a, a, an interim chair.
Okay, I'm just not supporting what we're doing here. I just don't understand this. This is just very strange, Christine. I just don't understand it.
I'm leaving. I've been trying to leave for a year and four months.
Everybody can proceed and vote. I'm just, I'm not gonna vote on this. I just think this is really irregular and it's hard for me to understand. And I, I know you think this is really an odd position, but I don't think you understand how odd it is to have someone at ten fifty at night say, do you wanna be chair? We need a chair, you know, I'm leaving. I, I just think this is just.
Everybody knew I was leaving. I, I don't know what the mystery is here. There had to be a new chair. It should have happened in June or in August. Everybody knew I was leaving. So something was gonna have to happen, so this is where everyone should have been thinking, how do we see this moving forward? And normally it goes to the vice chair or the secretary, but that's not happening in this instance, so. I think Doug Marshall would be a fantastic interim chair right now and have your elections in the fall with your two or three new members. That's what I'm pitching. I, I don't think there's anything outrageous. There's only five of us. Um, I mean, there's six of us, I'm counting me, but um, and it, it just, in case something happens and things don't roll out the way, you know, we're in COVID. We have no idea. It's so, I'm sort of living life right now. If we can do it today and just make some action and, and keep leadership and keep things moving forward, let's seize the day. And, and this is, it, it's just an interim. So anyways, I, I would. A- and I feel terrible for Doug. This is so ocko, like, what the heck? Like, we're just trying to get a temporary chair to be able to work with Chris, like, to keep things moving forward. This just seems so destructive to me to not even wanna vote for an interim chair. I, it, it, what else is there need to be think, thought about for two more weeks or a month or six weeks? We're just trying to do an interim chair. If we can do elections in September, fantastic, but it may not happen. It may be October or November. We live in very strange times right now. So as chair, I was just trying to leave you all in good hands and I couldn't think of a better set of hands than Doug Marshall to lead the way. He has shown nothing but exemplary leadership and knowledge and shocking, I know he's gonna be all embarrassed now, how fast he came up to speed and I, I, I am gonna say, I think he knows more than, than all of us, so, e- except for, not you, Chris. So anyways, I, I strongly would like to have a vote to vote Doug Marshall to be our interim chair. This is literally what I am asking you. I, I have given myself as much as I could this past year and the five years on the board, and this is the last thing I'm just asking. That, don't leave yourself without a leader. We have an amazing person here who's willing to step in as the interim chair and I'm asking you to please consider. I see Janet, then Jack, then Chris. Janet, you're, you're muted again.
I had a vestigial hand up, sorry.
Okay, um, Jack?
Yeah, I just, I, I, I just wanna say that I would support Doug, but you know, I have no problem being, you know, the intern person, but in my mind, uh, knowing that Doug is interested, you know, he would be my vote. But I don't mind being, uh, you know, in this transitional role, being, you know, doing that, and, you know, a couple of meetings, but you know, that's uh, I, I feel discord here and uh, I, you know, I don't like that feeling within the board. Um. So um. I know I would support Doug once we have the chair uh, come up full, but if, you know, I'd be willing to chair the next couple of sessions as a bridge and then, you know, I, I'd I'd nominate Doug. Um, but is that a difference than just non- nominating him now? So I'd you know, I feel, yeah, a sense of duty, uh. But I, I, I'm, I, you know, I'm hearing what, you know, I get, I guess I'm interested in what, what Chris feel, you know, feels is correct. I mean, like, I think Christine has said, like, there's no, it's all over the place in terms of how things are done in this situation and, yeah, should have been on the agenda. Perhaps, but, I mean, I didn't even really know. Uh. You know, today was, I, I didn't even know Dave actually left, you know, last meeting. And then he's in the, he's in the, you know, the, in the participants there. It's like, wait a minute, we forget to add, so, but anyway, I, um, I just wanted to do the right thing and um, everyone knows my, my intentions, what my desire are and, you know, and uh, just wanna do the right thing here and I think we need your help, Chris, to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Chris?
So I would be comfortable with having Jack serve as interim chair between now and the time you have your elections. Um, an alternative would be to actually put an interim election on the agenda for August nineteenth, but you would only have five members. August 19th, but you would only have five members available to vote. So, um, it seems to me that the best scenario in my mind would be to have Jack chair the next couple of meetings and then schedule your election for, um, September when you have your full complement of members. That would be my advice.
Michael?
I'd like to hear what Doug has to say. Everybody else has been shooting their mouth off.
Well, let's put Doug in an even harder spot now. Doug?
Now I'm unmuted. Right?
Yes, you are.
Okay, um, so I wasn't really looking to become chair, especially as fast as this would be. Christine's compliments notwithstanding, I don't feel like I know everything about amorous zoning.
Neither do I.
And I'm, I'm, I'm rather afraid that if I were chair, I would display that ignorance yeah, uh, more often than I've been able to so far. I actually agree that this is awkward, uh, and I think my feeling at the moment is that if Jack is willing to act as the bridge, you know, with, and we all need to keep in mind that he's not really able to give it the time or attention that I think he would like to, that we then, you know, commit to having an, uh, some sort of election, you know, with or without me in the mix in, it's, in September, you know, and, and I, I don't know how certain it is that we will get our new members, but, you know, it seems like even if there's only five of us who need to go along for a couple of months, it doesn't seem like Jack really wants to be that in that, the leader for very long. So, so I, at the moment, I would sort of second what Chris is suggesting, which is that we, ask Jack to, to, to help us forward and, and try to minimize the load he has to carry during that time.
Well said, Doug. Nice leadership. I, um, I have to say I'm disappointed. I think we have something really great that we're walking away from and I hope we don't regret it. I hope we do have members in September and I'd like to clarify that today, that if we don't, what if we only have one? Or we only have two? Or maybe we do have all three. Now you're talking about three out of seven people that haven't even ever been to a meeting before. And that's a lot of pressure to put them right in the election to choose their leader. Um, and I, I, I'm just saying, we, we could have set a tone here with an interim, but I don't understand why, when you actually, whether it's a surprise or not, it shouldn't have been a surprise. And when we look to who we have, when we look at this, I'm gone, so we look to the five, who's your leader? Who's gonna lead you? So, you know, part of being on planning board is you have to make decisions. You have to take action. And I, I don't think we took action today. I think we just made a really awkward moment and made someone who should be, I think, our leader, we, we gave him not a welcoming feeling. This was not teamwork. So I have to say I'm very disappointed and I'm really sad that this is how I'm ending my year as chair, but. Janet, I see your hand. Janet, you're muted.
Um, in a bid to avoid a vote, can, can Jack just act as vice chair and haul on a couple of meetings and then, um, we don't have to vote and Jack will just be the vice chair taking over temporarily until we get a, you know, on the agenda and make a vote and all that good stuff? Is that possible?
We don't know when that will happen, because if it's, if we don't have new members in the beginning of September, then you only have five members, so you're shrinking.
I think we can handle that situation, at least we know we're be heading into it. But Christine, I do appreciate all the work it takes to be a chair and I know, I hope it doesn't end on a really sour note. I just, you know, if Jack can step up as vice chair for one or two meetings, that's fantastic. But, you know, I know you put a huge amount of effort into this and I, I wouldn't wanna end it on this note either, so. I know, I mean, this takes hours and hours and hours and just even reading those insane site, you know, those documents, I just, it's kind of, just, you've done a really, you know, good job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
I don't think you have to have an election to have Jack serve as chair because he's the vice chair. So if Christine's not here, then Jack would be the normal person who would step into that role. So there's really no need for an election, um, at this time. And in September, when you have your election scheduled, then you would, um, choose your chair and your vice chair and your clerk at that time.
So, adios, hasta la vista.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, report of staff. Chris, you got anything?
I wanted to say thank you to Christine for all her hard work.
Yay, Christine!
Helping-
We're a team. We're a team.
And thank you very much, Christine, and I wish you great luck and happiness in your new endeavors.
Madame Chair, she has, uh, you know, made such a, a big impression, uh, on me and, and her dedication. Again, not, it, she, she put the bar pretty high, you know, because I've seen Steve Strieber, Greg Stutzman, um, and I know that Christine worked hand in hand with you, Chris, uh, above and beyond the call of duty, just because you've gotten waylaid with the change in government and everything else on your docket and, um, but again, um, don't be disappointed, Christine. You've been a huge success. And, and Doug, I think Doug's cool. I think Doug-
Doug is very cool.
All right, all right.
I apologize to Doug for, for this and I have great hope that it'll all work out. Um, and thank you all. Thank you all for working so hard. I wanna thank Pam. Pam, you are fantastic. You are like the wind beneath this whole thing. Yes, seriously, thank you. It's been a pleasure. The amount of work that you have to do and the amount of stuff and things you're juggling, it is amazing. And please pace yourself, take care of yourself and I look forward to a lot of great things happening this next year. Bye, everyone.
Are we adjourned? 10:29?
Yep.
10:29.